Amongst other things. And so when I saw on your agenda tonight that you're going to be considering a couple of resolutions regarding the Let's Bus system, I want to say, well, that's right down what we've been talking about being a good thing for Livingston County. And so that's why I'm here and that's why we're working hard to make Livingston County like you are a better place for all. Any questions? Oh, you said it's one way out.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Joni. Well, good evening. I know you have a task before you that you're going to be looking for a county health director. These are just some of my thoughts that I think that would be very important to consider as this board is that somebody must have either a medical degree, a master's degree in nursing from an accredited medical school. As a director of a health department, I think that would be really, really important. I think the consideration should be at least five to 10 years experience in a similar role within the state or local governments focusing on administration management, public health safety, or specifically with communicative or infectious disease control management. The history or recent experience with management and oversight of COVID-19 pandemic with another agency would be a consideration. I don't think we want to go backwards. We've experienced some unusual circumstances. We have kids that have lost learning and everything else. I think if we take it an opportunity and learn through those mistakes we made, let's not be taking kids that are healthy and placing them in homes. I'm going to use my nephew Luke for an example. Last year, that child missed 40 days of school that he will never make up. Now, if he missed 40 days of school outside of a pandemic, I think the Livingston County sheriff and probably a school resource person would have been on their front porch. That child's not going to get those 40 days back. And you know what? He never, ever tested positive. And sitting one evening having dinner with Luke, I asked him, I said, don't you think this is strange, Luke? Yeah. He's got two older sisters that go to the high school. Never were they sent home. And it came out during that evening dinner that Luke and his sister said, well, this is what's happening, Aunt Joni. One of our friends gets tagged. They got to go home. They've been exposed. They're giving out names. The child came to Luke and said, hey, I got to go home. Do you want to go home? Luke goes, sure, sure. So it became a game with these kids. The last time Luke was home and his parents couldn't take off time to stay with him, Tom, my husband, and I helped out. But the point is, the child was never tested positive. And we can't go back to that. The family that said, or the boy that said to Luke, you know what? I put your name down. Luke said, I've never been in contact with you.
You have 15 seconds.
They were texting. Oh, I'm sorry. And anyhow, the family of that child called my Luke's parents and said, I apologize. Luke should have never been tagged that he was exposed. So I think you got a big job ahead of you, and I hope that you take that all into consideration. Thank you.
I'm clear, Conley. If you would read the name and the township and the...
Colleen Quinn, Genoa Township.
Good evening. I wanted to comment on the resolution optimizing election integrity as it pertains to the acceptance of unregulated private monies for funding elections. And then I also wanted to comment on your search for a new Livingston County Health Department Director. I am totally against the acceptance of unregulated private monies for funding elections and request that you vote accordingly against such funds. Such funds always have an agenda. Generally, it's nefarious despite the attractive names they put on things. Given what happened in 2020, we need to do everything in our power to ensure our elections are above reproach. With regard to your search for the new Health Department Director, as a former human resources manager, I completely understand the effort involved in finding the best candidate. Based on our experience with the pandemic, this position takes on greater significance. Accordingly, I request that in addition to the normal qualifications, you only consider candidates who stand for medical freedom and against mandates. I am certain you can structure your interview questions to garner that information from them. Additionally, I ask that you secure commitments from them that they are willing and able to exhibit the courage and those such competencies to push back against harmful CDC, state health, or other guidance and mandates. We truly need leaders in that regard, not someone who's just going to follow orders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Quinn from Genoa Township.
Good evening. My name is Tim Quinn, and I do live in Genoa Township. We've been here for 26 years. And I want to follow up on what my wife, Colleen, just said. I want to speak on behalf of the resolution optimizing election integrity as it pertains to the acceptance of unregulated private monies for funding elections. I also want to look and comment on your search for a new Livingston County Health Department Director. I'm completely against the acceptance of unregulated private monies for funding elections. I ask that you vote against the use of these funds. Such funds generally have an agenda attached, and they should not be allowed to influence election outcomes. After what happened in 2020 and the fact that many, including myself, feel election fraud occurred, we need to go the extra mile to fortify our elections and ensure others in their funds are not allowed to influence our elections. I know this is going to be an ongoing argument for a lot of people. It's a big concern. I mean, we talk about it, we hear about it, we read about it. Nobody seems to have an answer. People keep saying or throwing up their hands, look at the amount of money that it's going to cost. Bottom line is, you know, the cost of freedom and democracy, it's not cheap. It's not cheap. Regarding the search for a new Health Department Director and based on our experience with the COVID pandemic, this position becomes more important than in the past. As already stated, in view of this, we request, in addition to the typical qualifications, you consider candidates who stand for medical freedom and against mandates. Additionally, we would ask that you secure commitments from them that they are willing and able to exhibit fortitude to push back against harmful CDC, state health, and other guidance mandates. We've been down that road. People are tired of it. People are real tired of it. We truly need leaders that question such orders and are looking out for our best interests. As we've discovered, our best interest extends beyond health, freedom and liberty, of course, and the Constitution must take precedence. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Julie, I believe it's Nelson. I might have that wrong from Howell. Oh, that was...
Good evening. I'll be short and quick. Sweet, I guess. Just in regards to what everyone's saying, the unregulated money, we all know kind of what happened last year with all the funding and the hours that were spent here. Everybody battling, should you take money, should you not? It just feels kind of like it's a no again. And then just for someone for the health director job that's going to, like they said, we need medical freedom, thinking more for the kids than anyone in the schools. Like Joni was saying, the number of days these kids were out, you go to a director that's going to allow mandates again, these kids just are not getting their education. So no, no to the money and just please be careful who you hire for this position. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Wallbank from Genoa Township.
Commissioner Nakagiri, commissioners, thank you for your attention. I want to comment on 06069 resolution. I'm an election worker. I've been an election worker for over 10 years. I was an election challenger for another 10 years before that. So I've been observing elections in Livingston County for a long time, and we have good elections here. We have good, honest people. We have good people in this county. We have honest people in this county. Tell me how much grant money the county has accepted from all kinds of grants. I mean, you know, county government largely runs on, you know, the tax funding and grants. So grants aren't evil. And the clerks' jobs are becoming increasingly demanding. It's becoming more difficult to recruit election workers. Clerks have to train the election workers, supply the election workers. Clerks have to find polling places. It's becoming increasingly difficult for clerks to find polling places. All these things take resources, take funds. Their clerks, their staff, the poll workers, they're all dedicated to assuring that every registered voter gets to exercise the right to register and vote. And I have never seen anything in this county or in any of the townships that contravenes that. Refusing grant money is fiscally irresponsible. It's irresponsible. I've read all the CTCL literature. There's nothing in there about partisan politics. And look at all of the townships and cities in Livingston County that have had this money, that have accepted this money. And as an election worker, I personally have benefited from it because the clerk in my township used that money to add to the reward of being an election worker. And it's tough. Elections are tough. It takes a lot of patience, skill, understanding to do these things. And also considering the reference in the resolution to irregularities across our nation, this is spurious. This refers to a myth originated by anti-democratic people. Again, we have good elections in this county. We've got hardworking clerks. We have good people running the elections, and we have good people voting, and it takes resources. And if the clerks can get more money for that, that's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Johnkier, City of Howell.
Good evening. I wanted to speak just briefly about the position of health officer. As some of you know, I started my career as an environmental sanitarian with the Health Department and was there two different times for a total of three years. And then when I couldn't hack that anymore, I became during commissioner. So it is not an easy job. But I wanted to tell this board in terms of getting the best person, and it's important that that person have a vested interest in this county and to me, one that has had an interest in this county. Matt is a person that is beyond reproach. And I'm a little taken aback that there's actually a call for the health officer to be predisposed to one maybe political agenda or political leaning over the other. And that is absolutely what we don't want in this position. And I'll tell you, I've asked Matt for special favors and treatment, and he won't give it to me. So that's a good sign in my book. You want somebody that follows the science, that is strong in common sense, and there is nothing but respect for Mr. Bolang around this county. At one of the, oh, in the recent past, one of the meetings, we talked about the survey. There was concern about, especially from new employees, in terms of their job satisfaction level. And this is certainly one thing that plays into that is how are existing employees going to be treated as they move up through the ranks? And granted, they should only move up through the ranks if they have the abilities and can add something to, you know, the administration of this county. But I do want to say Matt has, I think, the confidence of the entire county in terms of its employees, an awful lot of people in our community. And he's shown that time and time again. So I would encourage you to strongly consider Matt to be our next health officer, given his past and his dedication to this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Rosmarnowicz from Hamburg Township. Sorry, Lisa, if I mispronounced that, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to ask you to not allow public or big tech money into our county through whatever nonprofit they decide to shuffle it through. Contrary to some statements that were made, there was a push for this money way back in 2019. Documents obtained through the Court Open Records Act showed National Voted Home Institute CEO Amber McReynolds working with Benson to change Michigan elections policy. NVAHI shares leadership ties with the Center for Tech and Civic Life, the group that shuttled money from Zuckerberg to government election agencies ahead of the 2020 election. The documents also showed that the private organization funded by Facebook tycoon Zuckerberg exists to push states to adopt mass mail-in balloting of the kind that made chaos of the 2020 election. I don't know about you, but I have a problem with private groups telling public employees what to do. In the emails, McReynolds suggested that Benson use administrative rulemaking to implement a permanent absentee voting option in the state. Administrative rulemaking means making regulations based on an interpretation of a law, often yielding regulations that differ from the law's original intent and sometimes its explicit text. "I was thinking that you may have rulemaking authority," McReynolds wrote in an email on February 5, 2019. "The language indicates that voters have a right to vote without giving a reason, which to me has left open the possibility of permanent or election-specific requests. To me, this means you do not likely need a legislative change." Unquote. This was a big flip off to the Michigan Legislature. The communications go back to February 2019, long before the pandemic. Zuckerberg and operatives began moving pieces in place while in advance. I just want to say that the whole thought of this or what was communicated was this is all about safety, right? Because of pandemic. And now we know through this Open Records Act that this was planned before the pandemic. But very little of that money, according to an NPR report, was used for medical purposes, nor does CTCL have a medical person on staff. It was not used for PPO or PPP? Personal protective equipment, PPE, sorry. And I believe a lot of it was used for drop boxes. It could have been for personnel as well.
You have 15 seconds.
Okay. And I know there's naysayers and deniers about the 2,000 mules, but that was a big cause of some of the irregularities due to all the drop boxes and the nonprofits that were feeding ballots for people to take to different drop boxes. So please don't accept the money. Thank you.
Barbara Tonkovich from Genoa Township. And I apologize, Barbara, if...
You did it perfect. Thank you for letting me speak. I want to back up what Colleen and Tim were saying and others. In regards to first off, the county health director, we need medical freedom, and we also need to be sure that parents or legal guardians of any child in any school at any level is notified if there's any medical issues going on. And I'm talking about transgender stuff and abortion, just anything like that. Parents need to know. Okay. Also in regards to the election, oh, and also be sure that that medical director signs a commitment that he will not do bad things and that he will let parents and legal guardians know what's going on. Okay, the election part, I also agree with the private funds, big tech. We don't need any of computers. We need to get rid of these computers. We cannot trust them, especially the people that are teaching, whoever is operating these computers. We need paper ballots, which of course we get those mailed and they go through the computers. We need hand counting. I know it takes a longer time, it's more, but we need to do that. And wouldn't it be wonderful, like President Trump said, about having a day for the election where everybody can go and vote and they could take time off from work? No drop boxes at all. And I'm encouraging everyone that I talk to, and I've done it myself, going into the clerk office and dropping off your ballot. I don't even trust those boxes outside of the clerk's office because we don't know who's nefariously going to go and mess with it. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you.
Stephanie Bright, Livingston County.
Hi, how is everybody? I just wanted to talk about piggyback on what other people were saying in regards to selecting a health department officer. It's hilarious because my daughter and I have been watching Andy Griffith, and it used to be the health department officer, but it's a really sweet nurse, and she only forced vaccinated the farmers who wouldn't get the vaccine. And it's really funny to see where this began and where it is now. First things first, medical freedom isn't political. So it's not about right or left. It's not about up or down, and it's freedom. It's for everybody, and everybody should have the right to choose. It's a God-given right, and nobody, not even Diane, will be able to take our right away. So we do need to pick somebody that is stand for medical freedom. Also too, what Diane did, she took a little Hitler approach where she told a lie, but the lie kept getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Because I came to these meetings, and I remember when it started off really little. Do you guys remember when it started off little too? Like she wasn't going to go to... She was going to give informed consent, but she didn't even know what informed consent was when people asked her. So you cannot be for medical freedom if you do not know what informed consent is. Hopefully you guys go look that up, and you know that when you get a shot or you get a medical procedure, you are supposed to get informed consent to the fullest. She didn't even know what that was. Also too, we've listened to so many lies, right? Tell it big, tell it big. So again, the schools, the numbers, and what the things that, it didn't just affect that, it started to affect our business and our economy. So for her to say, wear a mask and get a shot, isn't really health advice. Right before 2020, did someone tell you to wear a mask to be healthy on the treadmill? You would have looked at them like you were a conspiracy theorist. But now our health advice is only get a vaccine and wear a mask, but not eat salad, exercise, vitamins, drink water. People are waking up to natural health. We need a health department officer that is aware that Big Pharma isn't the only answer. So someone who had a holistic approach or maybe a left-right in the sense that they followed Western medicine and Eastern medicine, there's a couple of different approaches you could take to health besides just the alphabet soup at the end of your name. Because if you have an RN and you're going to McDonald's every day, I am not going to take health advice from you. Also too, if you have a bunch of numbers after your, letters after your names, and you're taking the elevator up here, not going to take advice from you. Sorry about that. But yeah, again, we need somebody that has a more well-rounded approach. We need to vet them. Any of, I hate to say this, Diane's little minions that were doing the same thing, and I know they deserve respect, but after two years of hearing, wear a mask, take a shot, and we're going to close your business, we are not happy, and you don't get respect after that when you steal our freedoms, or at least try. I, for one, never wore a mask, never got a shot. I'm not about to. So thank you for trying, though.
Joanna Van Taram, Heartland.
Hi. I obviously wear a mask and I'm vaccinated, but I didn't come here to talk about that. I am concerned that we're talking about voting irregularities because it's been proven time and time and time again through court cases that that, in fact, is not a problem. So, and actually, neither were the drop boxes. So all of that is false information that should not be spread without contradicting information. So the fact is, it's been proven that that did not happen and that you going after these grants, as I've heard that you're going to do, the donations by the Center for Tech, there were no partisan questions on that at all. And nine municipalities from Livingston County actually applied, and everybody that applied got the money. So, and by the way, Livingston County overwhelmingly voted for Trump. So if they were trying to keep it from those counties, we wouldn't have got the money, right? I mean, if you're thinking logically, which I know doesn't always happen. So I basically just came to speak and let you know that there actually is a president, and he is Joe Biden, and he was elected fairly. And he didn't win in my county, and I'm okay with that because I know that when I vote, I don't always win. That's the way voting works. And then you move on and you wait for the next election. And what makes this country great and why my husband is moving here and becoming a citizen is because we have free elections. And promoting this lie that there was something wrong is, it's a travesty. It's a travesty for freedom. People need to get out more, I guess, and read more and do better research. Maybe that's where we need to improve in schools is teaching critical thinking because I think that's lacking. And that's all I came here to say, and I hope that Livingston County does not continue down this trail of misinformation because it's embarrassing. That's all.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll go to Zoom. We have several hands up. So we'll start in the upper left-hand corner, and it looks like Lori Cowan. If you give your name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Sure, thank you. My name's Lori Cowan. I'm from Unadilla Township. And I as well wanted to comment on the resolution about optimizing election integrity. My comments are similar to the ones last week. It is a resolution that is once again based on lies, falsehoods, and conspiracy theories. The real truthful facts are that in the 2020 election, one of the most needed elections for additional funding due to the pandemic, government failed to provide the appropriate monies. Zuckerberg luckily stepped up and donated 400 million to grants so states and municipalities could deal with the complexities this election brought. Forty-nine states, 2,500 jurisdictions, including nine municipalities in Livingston County, asked for money, and every single one of them received the request. They did not dole out money to favor one candidate. It was not tainted money. It provided funding to every state and every request made to help with making the process run smoothly due to the increase of mail-in ballots, again, due to the pandemic. It is everyone's right to vote, and it is the duty of the government to make it so everyone has access to voting. And mail-in ballots provide this, and I truly do not understand the objection to this. This is a democracy. There has been recount after recount, and every one of them showed there were no irregularities, and the results were accurate. This resolution is based on political fringe views that are based on nothing. So I'm asking you to vote no. It does not help our county. It only limits it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry LaRue, if you give us your name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, Sherry LaRue, Green Oaks Township. Thank you for this Zoom opportunity, as I have hurt my back. A little bit too much fun in the garden. I just wanted to say for the benefit of those who haven't heard this before, I want to share with you my biases, because everybody has biases, or a frame of thought, if you will. I am a Bible-believing, constitutional defending mom and grandma. And it is from that basis that I see all things. And I was doing some research in the Michigan Constitution, 2020 edition, and I found some things that they make you go, hmm. Hey, I come from the world of finance, not law. So that's why hmm is in order. Okay? And it has to do with both the things that everybody's been talking about today. But I'm gonna share with you that Michigan Constitution, Article 8, Section 1. Religion, morality, and knowledge being necessary to good government and the happiness of mankind, schools, and the needs of education shall forever be encouraged. Doesn't say anything in there about health. Doesn't say anything in there about social, emotional learning, right? That other nonsense that's going on. The other thing that I found that was kind of interesting is, under public health and general welfare, the public health and general welfare of the people of the state are hereby declared to be matters of primary public concern, and the legislature shall pass suitable laws for the protection of this. Now, in my 60 years on this earth, I will tell you that this was enacted in 1963, shortly after I was born. And, and what's of particular concern with, with this information, and where you see these things show up in the Michigan Constitution, is they showed up 60 years ago. The continual shift in societal standards started 60 years ago. As Ecclesiastes states often, over and over, there is nothing new under the sun. Sixty years this has been going on that I can trace back. Pretty bizarre. With regard to election, and how do you...
Yeah, 15 seconds.
It says in here, the place and manner of elections, that the legislature shall enact laws to regulate the time and place and manner of all nominations and elections to preserve the purity of elections, to preserve the secrecy, and to guard against abuse.
LaRue, your, your time is up. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Have a great day.
Thank you. Janine Ayer, if you provide us your name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Yes, Janine Ayer, Genoa Township. Good evening, and first I would like to express support of Resolution 2022-06069, that the, this board not approve or accept any donations or grants of private funds to the county for the funding or managing of elections. I agree with this resolution that the funding and managing of elections is a governmental function, not a private one. When Mark Zuckerberg granted private funds to Michigan and other states, he disproportionately distributed his funds to favor one party over the other, his party. Thus, unregulated private funding of elections introduces a disparity that otherwise would not exist if private funds were not allowed. Secondly, I would like to voice support that the, the Board of Commissioners do out an exhaustive search for a replacement for the retiring Health Officer McCormick. Michigan law gives the county health officer a great deal of power. For instance, the Michigan Health Code authorizes the county health officer to establish emergency orders, which may be put in place indefinitely. So I do support an exhaustive search for an individual who shares our community's value for health freedom. I support an exhaustive search for a medical or health officer who will stand against mandates, stand for health freedom, and will be willing to resist harmful CDC or state health guidance. So I urge the board to diligently and thoroughly search for a replacement who will protect the health freedom of Livingston County residents. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Next up is Dan Luria. If you give us your full name and township, you'll have three minutes. We'll move on to Jessica. If you give us your full name and township, you'll have three minutes. You have to, do we have to unmute, or can they un...? Oh, there you go.
Oh, there we go. My name is Jessica Bearfield, and I am in Putnam Township. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time tonight. I would like to speak on record regarding the new Health Director appointment. It is my understanding that Ms. McCormick is recommending that her deputy be appointed to her position. However, just because the current director is recommending her deputy to be promoted to her role does not mean her deputy is the best suited for the role. This position is quite possibly one of the most important in the entire county. This is the person that holds the fate of our citizens and our children in their hands based on the decisions they make. Merely settling on whomever the former Health Director recommends is a haphazard practice, and you owe it to every constituent within the county who votes for you to conduct an extensive job search and to thoroughly vet and interview every viable candidate, and choose one that is not only properly licensed and credentialed, but also one who will uphold their oath to office and whose decisions reflect the beliefs of the citizens within this county. Specifically, one that will place a great amount of weight on medical freedom and liberty, and not one who will sheepishly enforce government and CDC overreach decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bill Reber, I hope I got that right.
Yeah, yeah, you got it. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time, Commissioners. I will also be quick. Bill Reber from Genoa Township, Precinct 1. I, like others, I would urge the Board of Commissioners to please pull out all the stops, find the best candidate that supports medical freedom, that supports individual choice, which is, seems to be in the news an awful lot these days. You know, I had, I have two kids that recently got out of school and college. They suffered, the son had to skip a year because of the mandates, it just destroyed his learning, couldn't, couldn't learn anything. So he lost a year of his life because of unfair, not supported by science and data. One mask, two masks, no mask, wear it underwater, wear it at the beach. It's ridiculous that we've been misled by a bunch of people that, that decide what is right for other people based on political whims, and, and that's just my opinion. Everybody can look back from the start of the pandemic to the end, how many different times it's changed the effectiveness. It's, it's ridiculous. So the, the science and the data was based on models that were proven wrong again, and again, and again. So if we're gonna have a Health Director, somebody in calling the shots for the health of Livingston County that had the power to lock schools down, to enforce unnecessary mandates, the, the board needs to be very careful, the Commissioners need to be very careful that that is not the type of person that I want in charge of the Health Department of Livingston County. Medical freedom isn't a political thing. It is about freedom. It's the freedom to go where you want, go to the schools you want to, visit the restaurants you want to visit, walk around, just a free person with all of your rights intact. And I don't want big government, state government, local government, city, township-level government dictating what I can and cannot do, or my children can and cannot do. So please, search for the best candidate out there. Spare no effort. Find somebody that's gonna support medical freedom. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madeline, if you give us your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Certainly. Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Madeline Thomas, and I'm from Livingston, actually, I'm sorry, Brighton Township, Livingston County. Anyways, I could just make a brief saying that I echo the sentiments of most of your speakers here. I pray that you look hard and long for someone that supports the Constitution and medical freedom, and doesn't blindly follow the dictates or suggestions of the not always honest CDC and other governmental authorities who have totally botched the handling of this pandemic and created much more hardship than was needed. And as far as the, the money that was contributed by the tech, everybody knows pretty much how that went, and we ask that you do not accept money from private organizations, as one said, the government should be handling the expenses of the election. And as far as the voting irregularities, I would have to disagree with some of the people, because I was myself on a voting canvas. As a tiny example of what we found is that there are seven people living in the Howell United Parcel Office, and five of them voted. So that is just one tiny part. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up will be Lisa. If you give your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Alisa Davis, and I live in the city of Brighton. Thank you very much for hearing me tonight. I'll try to get everything in, you know how verbose I can be. First of all, we are not a democracy, we are a republic. I just want to lay that out for everybody who keeps referring otherwise. Regarding the Health Director position, the opening, if you think back, both the administrative and the medical side of our Health Directors, Directors never promoted treatments available, nor did they ever practice preventative health measures. I'm sure you remember that you yourself advised the Health Department to post this information on their website, to date, and this is so many months ago. This has still never happened. So, so as far as bringing in the deputy to continue on this behavior is, it's horrible. So the end result was that these people directly hurt the people of our county in both physical and mental health. They blatantly disregarded your guidance and pursued their own agenda without regard or consequence to the people of Livingston County. You know me, as I always say, dirty money makes for dirty people. All that COVID money, I think, really tainted what was going on back then. So now is the time to remove us from the deep pockets of Big Pharma and make Livingston County unafraid to be healthy again. Speaking of deep pockets, nine municipalities accepted the Zuckerbucks. And just like the COVID money that came to the Health Department, Little Mark's money infiltrated our elections with more filth. It's now proven that there was fraud on the Livingston County level during the 2020 election. Whether Sheriff Murphy or Clerk Hundley want to acknowledge this, it's there. We need to not only remove the private funding, we need to remove the machines. I contacted Clerk Hundley, and I have an email right here in front of me. If you would like a copy of her response, I'm happy to provide. She states, "I support the use of election equipment and have seen firsthand the errors that humans make when hand-counting paper ballots. And many checks and balances we have in place have proven to work very well. My office does the ballot programming, and we utilize an extensive proofing process in an attempt to avoid any errors with our ballots. When you look at the fraud that was found..."
Yeah, 15 seconds.
"...clearly Clerk Hundley is mistaken. Maybe she needs extra help, and maybe the paper ballot should be hand-counted. I'm happy to help provide enough people to hand-count these ballots. Please make your decision in favor of your constituents, not in favor of the wallet. Thank you so much."
Thank you. Next up, looks like Yvonne Black. If you provide your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Nakagiri. Hello, my name is Yvonne Black, and I live in Marion Township. I am very aware of the increase of mental health issues, addiction, and suicide related to COVID-19. Today you, as county commissioners, will vote on Resolution 06068, Resolution authorizing the county treasurer to establish Fund 237. This 14-page resolution brings an unknown amount of money, most likely several million dollars annually, for 18 years affecting every man, woman, and child in Livingston County. This resolution is expansive and vague. There is no disclosure or accountability as to who is actually doing what, when, and where regarding the approved list. No parameters, no disclosure as to who has oversight authority over this approved list. This resolution ensures that healthcare providers are indiscriminately screening for opioid use disorders and other risk factors with every patient. Unaccountable data collection and research strategies. Training and education for first responders, schools, communities, school-based and youth-focused programs, hospital emergency departments, healthcare providers, recovery coaches, and outreach specialists. Development and dissemination of training curricula. Engaging nonprofits-based, faith-based communities and community coalitions. Comprehensive wraparound services, housing, transportation, job placement, childcare, community support services, including social and legal. Funding for media campaigns, prevention programs in schools, medical provider education and outreach training. Hire or train behavioral health workers. Training and development of procedures for government staff. Eighteen years of expansive, vague, and unaccountable to Livingston County Commissioners. Please keep our county safe and vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jessica Hamlin. If you give us your name and township, you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Jessica Hamlin, Osceola Township. With the current Livingston County Health Officer retiring on July 1st, I am speaking today to ask the board to take this opportunity to explore all available candidates and choose one that best fits the needs of our county. The Health Officer statute holds much power and authority, and we have witnessed and lived through just how much that impacts our community, our daily lives, and most importantly, our children and their development and education. We now fully understand that the selection of a new county health officer is the most important appointment decision made by the Board of Commissioners, and we are making it clear that we want this appointment to be a person that makes health freedom and individual rights a priority. It is my understanding that the current Health Officer would like her lieutenant appointed, and from everything we have experienced over the past two-plus years, we do not want our county to relive any of our liberties being stripped as a consequence of choosing a Health Officer without the Board of Commissioners conducting a thorough search of all available candidates. We rely on our Commissioners to select the best candidate possible, and in order to reach a level of competence in the decision your vote will make, we need you to inquire, explore, and most importantly, vet more than one single candidate option. It is critical and essential that the person appointed by your vote will honor and uphold the oath of office as a condition of employment. Thank you, and I look forward to hearing what direction this discussion goes.
Thank you. Next up is Stephanie Miklos. Give us your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, it's Miklos. I live in the city of Howell. Here to not really echo the thoughts of most of the people here. I do believe the election was not stolen. I know our president is Joe Biden, I accept that. I think Donald Trump is a disappointed loser, and it's, the truth is all coming out in the hearings, which people probably aren't paying any attention to. You know, as far as accepting money, I've seen a lot of untruth spoken tonight, so I'd say just take it from some random source rather than people who don't know what they're talking about, who don't believe the science. I'd rather take my bets with them than listen to further untruth here. In, in, besides the point is, any municipality can accept these funds, whether the Commissioners... accept these funds, whether the commissioners wants to or not. I'm sure they will do that. You know, for you guys to perpetuate the big lie, and you know, if I'm a Trump supporter right now, I would be suing him for using this election fraud money for his, you know, personal use, his hotels, everything else. It's really a travesty what has gone on. That note, we've had our own sheriff here prosecute or try to prosecute someone for freedom of speech. Our freedoms here are under attack. She merely called out someone who came out at a public meeting. A health official, no less, came out and just with some anti-science things at this board meeting and she said, hey, look who's here from this place calling out misinformation. Our own undersheriff who was here tonight, I am aware. He decided to prosecute it or put it up for charges as a test case with no merit. It was dismissed. So you got to look at that. Where's our freedom of speech here? You know, there's some vocal people that are very vocal and saying, you know, here's my belief. That's fine. You can believe that. But for, you know, seven of you or eight of you, however many are there, to sit there and perpetuate the lie that the election was stolen, to disavow all the truth that is coming out is beyond irresponsible. It's dangerous. So I'm just going to say that. I'm not going to say whether I think the funds are being used appropriately. I did sit through the trial of Patty Scolaris. Mrs. Hundley testified what I believe was correct, that she did make a huge mistake. The, you know, the jury-
You have 15 seconds.
Okay, the jury selection was private. It should have been public. You know, five officials got up there and testified and there was two people in support of her. Anyway, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Penella, if you give us your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, Livingston County Commissioners, this is Anna Penella. I live in Brighton Township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Just for the record, I was a poll watcher in Detroit and having been there and seen what exactly happened myself, I can assure you that the election was stolen just for that last person there. Anyway, my purpose for the call-in tonight is to request that the new health director search is exhaustive to search for somebody who stands for medical freedom and against mandates. I have four young children in public schools in Livingston County and I watched with complete horror what they put these kids through. And our kids were actually a lot more fortunate than other counties because our commissioners came to stand for our kids and held to task the director when it came down to it, to make sure that healthy children were not barred from attending their constitutionally guaranteed education, especially when there was no proof of them having any type of illness. I also wanted to address the idea of private funding for our elections. I am entirely against that. Our government, our county, our local municipalities have the funding and can do what it takes to make sure that we run free and fair elections without the influence of private company funding. Zuckerbucks impacted the last election dramatically and we just want to make sure that that doesn't happen or doesn't have an opportunity to happen, especially for the continuance of 18 years in the future. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen's iPhone. If you give us your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, this is Kathleen Davertl from Howell Township. I'd like to echo others as I'm against unregulated private funds for our elections. Please reject this. Also, please exhaust your search and only consider candidates for the health director who are committed to stand for health freedoms, individual choice and against mandates. For anyone who thinks this is a political agenda, this is health freedom and individual freedoms for all, not just one party. Sounds like we, the people of Livingston County, want security in our freedoms regardless of if the person is already an insider in the health department or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Dawn Smith. If you give us your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes. My name is Dawn Smith and I'm a resident of Brighton Township. And I want to give my input about the person who's going to be in charge of the county health. From my perspective, I just want to give a little bit of information. I'm a registered nurse. I also am a clinical nurse specialist and a acute care nurse practitioner with 25 years of experience in the ICU. Fortunately, I was working in Detroit during the pandemic from the beginning and I was able to use my experience and knowledge to try to save as many patients as we could get. My hospital was flooded with patients and I had to convert my cardiovascular ICU into a full COVID unit, kind of on the fly. And we had to take care of patients the best we can. And I basically spent the first four or five months of COVID, taking care of COVID patients every minute. When I got home, I studied, I went on Facebook, I looked everywhere to find the best information to help the doctors take care of them. We had daily meetings. So I have a lot of experience actually taking care of COVID patients and it was heartbreaking. However, I also was working when the number of cases went down and we were still not allowed to do surgeries that were important for our patients in Detroit. The governor would not let us do surgery on patients who needed cardiac surgery. So this is very emotional for me, but I also had to deal with patients coming in that were dying from cardiovascular comorbidities because we were not allowed to do what the doctors wanted to do, what the surgeons wanted to do, what the nurses wanted to do, because the administrative bureaucracy in the government was making decisions not on actual facts and real science. So I can tell you that things were skewed. I lived it. I saw it. I was there. People had been lied to. The numbers have been altered. They're counting people as unvaccinated that were vaccinated. And I also, unfortunately, because I was the cardiac clinical nurse specialist of the cardiovascular ICU, we did take care of patients, young people with myocarditis and other cardiac adverse events from the vaccines. Because I saw this and had already had COVID, because I risked my life to take care of patients, I then refused to be vaccinated because it was not in my personal medical choice, best interest. That is the most important thing is autonomy-
You have 15 seconds.
Autonomy for patients and families and children and other people should not be able to make those choices for us. We have to be very careful who we put in those positions of power. Thank you.
Thank you. Up is Joe Tocidis. Looks like from Brighton. You have three minutes.
Thanks, Wes. I wanted to call and voice my support for an exhaustive search for the replacement for the health director. Livingston County is one of the top counties in the state. Certainly, we deserve an exhaustive search. When we look at hiring from within, it's not about, the primary point isn't being fair to people who work for the county. It's about serving the citizens of the county and getting the best talent we can in that position. I'd encourage you to look for somebody- -experienced-
Oh, you're muted. Muted himself. unmute yourself. I tell you what, we'll take a pause. We'll go to Danielle. If you give us your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Danielle Anjo and I'm in Handy Township. And I'm just here to echo a lot of the sentiments expressed by people here today, especially Ms. Yvonne Black, Jessica Bearfield, the person who was just on. I think you absolutely need to do an extensive search for the next director. The good news for you guys is there's a lot of nurses that don't work anymore because they were forced out of their positions because they refused to get vaccinated. So you've got plenty of talent to choose from, I think. So I think that that would be the best idea is to go ahead and make that position open and allow people to have a shot at it. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Jason, if you give us your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Sure. Hi, my name is Jason Hughes, City of Brighton. And I just wanted to voice my opinion regarding the acceptance of the funds from the nonprofit for elections. Just want to say that I think that elections workers work really hard and the amount of stress and effort that they put into that job to ensure that our elections are secure and safe and accurate, they should be able to get all the equipment and funding necessary and grant money from whatever source that comes with no strings attached and come from a politically neutral source that does not have an agenda, that provides money to any municipality that provides an application, should be received and accepted by those in Livingston County. And it's disgraceful to think that any elected official at any level of government still thinks that the election is not accurate and somehow, some way that people's votes were thrown into suitcases and taken away or whatever other lie that's being perpetrated right now by the former president. Even his own administration, former Attorney General Bill Barr told him that it was bullshit. And yeah, so it's very frustrating being a college-educated person and hearing these lies continue to be promoted throughout every level of government. And it's just really upsetting. And I just want to say that hopefully we can get past this and grow stronger as a community, as a country, because it's tearing, tearing people apart from their families, their friends, all because of the big lie that's being continuously promoted through your news organizations and also on social media, which the Facebook platform was used to promote large amounts of misinformation during the past few elections. And I believe that's one reason why Zuckerberg is donating a lot of money through the nonprofit to help bolster elections throughout the country to make up for the fraud that he promoted during President Trump's first election and all the information that was spread and all the lies that were spread as part of his campaign that was backed by the Russians. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Sheriff Murphy, you have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Sheriff Murphy, City of Howell. So I'm going to, there's a first time for everything. I'm going to agree with Brian Johnkier. And I'm going to speak out in favor of Matt being promoted to take Diane's place. And I will just say this, I would challenge anybody that spoke about the mandates, anybody that spoke about the orders, I would ask them to provide those. Diane never issued any mandates. She never issued any orders. Everything that she did was just to provide information and recommendations. It was the businesses, it was the school boards that took those recommendations and did what they did with them. You know, at the risk of making all the school boards mad, they had the opportunity to not follow those recommendations. As a matter of fact, Fowlerville did just that. So at any rate, hindsight is always 2020. There's no question about that. These were unprecedented times. And I think to tie Matt to Diane is a little bit disingenuous because Matt's his own person. That would be like tying me to former Sheriff Pizat. Former Sheriff Pizat did his thing, I'm doing my thing. We're two totally separate people there. When you are the head of an agency, whether it's an elected position or whether you're the head of a department, it's difficult and you have to make decisions. And I commend Diane frankly for making decisions. Maybe she didn't get it right every time, but at least she made decisions. Alls we have to do is look around and see paralysis by analysis. So my hat's off to her. And I would just say this as well. You know, we as a county do strategic planning and we do strategic planning because we try to figure out where we're going to go and how that's going to be. We as electeds, we as department heads, we as leaders should have folks in place in the event that we keel over tonight from a heart attack, we get run over by a bus or whatever. And I think that Diane's done that. Matt is very well respected. You're not going to find anybody that has more integrity than he does. And I think he would carry on the health department in very good fashion. One of the great things about our county is the ability to be able to pick up a phone at any time and know that person. And that continuity would still be there. And again, unfair to compare him to Diane, but in the same sense, if you want to do that, Diane handled this pretty darn well, given the fact that she did not issue any orders or mandates. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to go ahead. I don't see anybody else and close the-
Mr. Chair, I did have one more card submitted before the end. Jared Alamatt from Genoa Township.
My name's Jared Alamatt. I live 5518 Arbor Bay Court in Brighton, Michigan, in Genoa Township. I came to speak on the matter related to outside funding to the clerks, similar to the Zuckerbucks and the things like that that happened. And I've listened to some of the commentary. And there's a lot of, I can understand why people are confused. There's a lot of misinformation all over the place out there. And it really requires, it's almost a conspired effort to suppress certain information in favor of others. And it makes it very, very difficult to have honest intellectual discourse because you can't actually speak about anything with any facts or integrity. Everything resorts to name-calling and things of that nature. So I will, I will try not to do that today, but I would like to share with you some things that I think are very basic, common sense things that would lend themselves to believing that there was election fraud. And I think any reasonable person in the face of some of this data would acknowledge that and would want to do everything that they can in order to secure our election, which is our most sacred right. So one of the things that first struck me about this election is the fact that we engaged in contracts with Dominion, which is a firm that actually provides election machines to a lot of very nefarious countries, Venezuela being one of them. I ran a company across South America for a period of time. And I spent a lot of time in Venezuela. And Maduro and Chavez before him was not the will of the people. It was the will of the party in power and they were able to manipulate their elections in like fashion. I think the fact that Dominion voting machines also can be connected to the internet, which is actually prohibited by some state law, I believe including ours, yet that they still were used and in many cases found to be connected to the internet. I find the fact that that fact was not looked into or investigated, I find that problematic. The fact that more people, if you look at the swing states, more people voted in the swing states than were registered. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out if you have half a million more people voting than what you have registered. First of all, that's extremely unusual. You can go back and look at the data and statistics from other, from other times. But that does not happen. And when you have that across the board, and I can read the states, Nevada, Pennsylvania, Minnesota, North Carolina, Wisconsin, Michigan, Arizona, sound familiar? Georgia, you would find that that is the case. So all of these things lend themselves to the idea, even before the last few months, that certainly there must have been something going on.
15 seconds.
Okay. There's been tens of thousands of signed affidavits that fraud was witnessed. And beyond that, it's, it's pretty clear to me that, you know, we've got a serious voter integrity issue in this country. And if you watch the movie 2000 Mules, I think it's 2000 Mules.
Your time is-
It's, you can't even deny it. Any objective person, if they watched that, would concede the voter fraud from themselves. Any objective person, if they watched that, would concede the voter fraud from themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Close the call, the public, and move on to item number seven, which is-
Commissioner Nockit Gary, the gentleman that we lost when he was talking is back on.
He muted himself.
Okay, we'll let Mr. Tzidiis complete. Go ahead.
So you're unmuted, you should be unmuted, or able to unmute.
Thanks, sorry about that, my, my computer battery died in the middle of the last one. I'll be brief, I just wanted to voice my support for an exhaustive search and recommend that we look for someone not only with a medical background, but somebody with a business and leadership background. You know, this is the kind of position where someone's gotta have a backbone, we can't have people who make decisions in fear, for fear of being pointed at, for fear of somebody getting sick and so they err to the side of shutting down schools. This kind of a thing, there's long-term effects in the decision made by a person at that health director level, has consequences for people far beyond a school year, there's a lot of depression issues and a lot of other pending healthcare issues. So we have to have a big thinker, we have to have a critical thinker and somebody with a business mind, because this affects businesses as well as schools when those types of shutdown decisions are made. And I'd also like to speak regarding the unregulated funding. There was a comment made earlier that there's been private money in elections for years and we've had no real problems with elections in the past. I think it's fair to say that this is on a completely different scale. We're not talking about the guy who owns the local hardware store buying a copy machine for the people running election. We're talking about Mark Zuckerberg swinging the scales far to one side, he's a partisan. And regardless of how you feel about this, folks who might think that's okay in short-term thinking because they're on the same side as Zuckerberg, you know, we have to think about being able to control this and be able to call people to account. We have a tough enough time calling our politicians to account, we get to elect or reelect them or not elect them. If we start having people be able to wield this kind of power from the private sector under the guise of just helping out because an end of government can't take care of themselves, that's a formula for disaster. That's all I've got, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Now I'm gonna go ahead and close the call, the public, and move on in the agenda to item number seven, which is approval of minutes. We have minutes dated May 23rd, 2022, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
So move Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Halserman, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The minutes are approved. There are no tabled items from previous meetings. So we'll move on to item number nine, which is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move Halserman.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Halserman, support by Commissioner Griffith, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We have an agenda. Item number 10 is reports from commissioners. Do we have any commissioners with a report? Commissioner Griffiths.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I have given you a written report of the meeting that I went to for the Michigan Counties Workman's Compensation Fund. We do, I am the appointment for Livingston County to go to the meetings, there are four a year, I just got back and that's why I was absent at last week's meeting. And for the sake of time, I wanted to just, for some of you that don't know the background of that committee, that is what I have sent to you or have, you have in front of you. And also to let you know that the fund is very well managed, it's like managing a business of $43 million. And one of the really neat things is that when this fund was originated, Livingston Counties Jack LaBelle, which I don't think any of you had the privilege to, to serve with, I did maybe January and at the same time, he was one of the people that started this particular fund. And Livingston County was one of the eight counties that still remain in this fund. And due to the management of this fund, you will see that there are dividends that are paid and we are recipients of those dividends. They have averaged a good return of about 35% each year is the average, which is good. Not knowing what the stock market's going to do next, I don't know, but anyway, those dividends we have used toward our unfunded liabilities as a board here. So if you have any other questions, let me know and I'd be happy to go into greater detail. But this has been a benefit to Livingston Counties, also helped us with our safety and making sure that we do have a safe workplace.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, we'll close reports and move on to a discussion. So we have a discussion to ascertain the will of the board with regards to process to appoint the next county health officer. There are choices to be made and whether we want to look, you know, inside only, whether we want to go with the retiring health officer's recommendation or whether we want to look around outside. So I, I would, my preference is to look around, but I, just one commissioner on the board, so I really wanted a chance for others to chime in and see where we're at so we can decide and move forward. Because Diane is retiring on July 1st, so looking for people's, commissioners' thoughts.
As has been stated, I think this is one of our first, one of our most important, most powerful positions in our, in our county. And I think that government has been somewhat foolish in the way that so much authority has been put into this one position. However, the Health Department, our country has always been a free country, but we've always had, elected officials and health officials have had always the responsibility to keep the general public healthy. I had an uncle that died at the age of three with diphtheria. He jumped into his mother's arms and died of diphtheria. That doesn't happen these days. I read in a, in a news article from old Fowlerville, there was a diphtheria outbreak in Fowlerville, which would have been over, you know, well over 100 years, 125 years ago now. And they closed the school for one diphtheria death. So it would not spread. And, and it was a local decision, it was an important decision. We live in different times when people don't die of diphtheria, people don't die of smallpox. There are a lot of things that people don't die from. And so there, there does need to be a health department that has broad discretionary powers to keep the publics safe. When it came time for, for AIDS, for example, the health establishment took the exact opposite approach. So you cannot tell anybody who has AIDS, you cannot, you can't quarantine for that. So the Health Department has gone kind of funny in a lot of ways, but the ability to quarantine, the ability to keep the, the public safe is important. But then it's always a matter of judgment. The person who is in that position should be put in that position because we trust that person's judgment. And one thing about Matt, we know Matt. We've seen him work and he's well-known in our community. And he understands, he understands the thought that has been, that has sat at this table for, for many years. I think that no matter who we choose, I think I'd rather have somebody that I know than somebody that checks all the boxes that we like that we don't know. We also, in our county, we have a strategic plan. And strategic plan is to plan for, one of the things is to plan for succession. And these days, in our county and across our country and across our state, it's hard to keep good people. And one way that we keep good people, I think in Livingston County, is that there's always the possibility of moving up in Livingston County. There's the next step is always available here at a place that, that people know. I am, I've been in this position before with other, other things that I thought I understood the will of, of the board. And I chose to not go on hunting for the quote-unquote best person. And the board didn't agree with me, but I think at this particular point, I am satisfied with the one that we have, the one that's been suggested. I think when we consider everything, I, I'm, I feel very comfortable going with the person that I know, because it's a matter of judgment. We've seen his judgment and other things. And Matt, for example, I, I'm, I think I understand this correctly, when it came time to get businesses back going, restaurants back going, I believe it was Matt that suggested that for one year we waive the fees for restaurants to help them out, to get them back going from, from this. And in my mind, that kind of shows the heart of Matt and the judge, you know, because that, nobody in Lansing told him to do that. You know, nobody on this board told him to do that. You know, it was a matter of his judgment and his independent thinking. And I, for a lot of reasons, I'm happy to not have an outside search committee unless this board chooses not to take Matt. You know, that's the only time I would have a search committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else with a chime in? Commissioner Griffiths.
I have said this before and I thoroughly endorse Matt. I, as a commissioner, have been, had the privilege to work with him on several committees. I don't know if any of the other commissioners have or not. I know that I worked with you, Matt, on the Septic Appeals Board, and I'm sure everybody here is very envious of that job and would love to be on that committee. But I want to tell you in all seriousness that he, Matt has leadership qualities, he's well-respected. The, that's not an easy decision or easy commission, committee, and people that come in angry, they come with their attorneys. Matt has a backbone, he is a man of leadership. I also want to say again, the strategic plan that we have in place is there for a reason. We have deputies in most of our positions just for bench strength. And because of that, the staff knows those that are coming up in the ranks, they work well. If for some reason that does not work out, then there are other plans in place. But to go over a strategic, or to go out and hire a company to, to look around, I want to remind people that I think if we're going to use hiring solutions, was going to be $21,000 of taxpayer money to do that when we have someone who is in place that is qualified for this. I know that each person here, each deputy is their own person. And I know Matt has been with the county long enough that he can make his own decisions, but he's well-respected by the people that work with him and he's respected by the board here, that if there was something that I'm sure that he felt, or we felt, that we didn't understand or question on why he was, had some sort of, I don't know, it was going a different direction, he would be open to our comments. So I would thoroughly endorse Matt, I have no reason to believe that he wouldn't be a good leader in this particular position.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. In, in sailing terms, when you're, when you're going into a storm, you want a proven captain and, and we, we really did have that. Matt had the ability to, to be the right hand of Diane during an unprecedented, once-in-a-lifetime situation that a lot of people referenced in their comments. With, with over 20 years now with the county, I have, I have taken a kind of straw poll of various leadership positions within the county, I have taken a, an interest in digging into Matt's background. I have heard not one derogatory remark in everything I've done. We as a county owe it to ourselves admittedly to do the fiscally correct thing and also to get the best people possible. Sometimes in our endeavors to find the best candidate, we, we get enamored with credentials or degrees or some other certification. You know, the reality is, we have a young man in front of us that has proven his ability to sail a ship through a storm. He has learned from that experience. He is strongly supported internally. He is a, every, everything I understand to be a, a very solid manager of people and is his own person. I, I think it's important to, you know, we, we throw out the idea that, that, well, it's also in our strategic plan and it's not something we should take lightly. I mean, if it's something we should take lightly, we should get it out of our strategic plan. That, that those positions need a deputy. And I'm, I, I struggle with not doing an outside search, but I, in this particular case, I just don't see a need when we have someone with, with this background, this training, this hands-on experience, that, you know, I just, I, I can't imagine- this hands-on experience that, you know, I just, I, I can't imagine we'll find elsewhere. And then the reality is we know him. And even if we did find someone with the, with the same or, or even slightly better skillset, I think we, we go to ourselves to go with the proven player. So I, I at this point would vote against doing an outside search.
Other commissioners want to chime in? Commissioner Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm proud to say that I have known Matt Bolang for over 20 years. And everything that I've heard about him from other people who work in the county in various areas has been nothing but, but high praise that he's well qualified. And one thing that has not been mentioned that I'd like to disclose is that we have been told that Mr. Bolang has met or exceeded every qualification that's been dictated by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. So he is in essence approved as a candidate for this position. And I, I echo the comments of my colleague, Commissioner Smith, that I feel we have a well-qualified individual in house. I don't see the need to spend money to do, hire a search firm. And I'm hopeful that we can appoint Mr. Bolang as our new health officer. Thank you.
I'm gonna chime in. The, I know Mr. Bolang well. He's a professional person and I have nothing against him personally. But it, in my view, it is, it is, if we don't look outside, we are, there is no way to know that we have the best candidate. It's just impossible to know that we have the best candidate. We, we do have a process of succession planning. And that's not to be discarded or talk or ignored lightly. But I tell you what, this particular appointment is, in my view, the most important, important appointment that the county commissioners will ever make. We are statutorily authorized, required by law to make this decision. It is not a decision of the county administrator or anybody else. It is specified in statute that it's the Board of Commissioners. This is the, the ultimate of importance because we are going to appoint somebody who can, has vastly more authority than we do as a Board of Commissioners to enact, enact policy. And I, I want to make sure that we have the best person that is at the forefront of medical freedom. We never have had a pandemic like we've had. So we had a chance to get insight on how our health department did things. And we got a chance to see how other health departments did things. You know, we did some things well. I, I will give our current health officer credit for not enacting a mask mandate where other counties did. But where I strongly disagree, and I, and to, to this day, I still disagree. It was such a, a bad policy decision that quarantining of healthy students was just the ultimate in, in poor decisions. And I, I, I want to know that whoever takes over the helm, I, I want to understand where they are at on that issue of medical freedom. I, I want to know with high certainty. I mean, I guess we could appoint somebody and, you know, find out, well, they didn't do what they were going to say. But I, I want that shot at evaluating that on that very important point, medical freedom. We would have an opportunity to assess Mr. Bolang, to assess others in this position. You know, our questions that go through my mind is if we're looking at multiple candidates, what did you do on behalf of medical freedom? How, how hard did you fight that? Were you in the forefront or were you in the background? I, I want to know where people stand on that issue because this position has so much authority. I want to also talk about, you know, there's an administrative health officer, the difference between administrative health officer and a medical health officer. We in Livingston County have a, currently have an administrative health officer. If we hire Matt Bolang, we will have another administrative health officer. And, and in both cases, both health officers do, are, grew up in the environmental health ranks. So that's restaurant inspections as an example, you know, septic, you know, field inspections. In both cases, the current health officer and, and Mr. Bolang, they don't have the clinical experience. I mean, we could take a nurse as a health officer. And I think we stand a better chance of pushing back against onerous state or CDC guidelines with somebody that has better clinical experience, that can speak from firsthand experience. Hey, you know, why, why are you CDC advocating, you know, vaccinating five-year-olds? As opposed to saying, well, the CDC says five-year-olds and we're just going to follow suit. If you look at the data, it, it makes no sense to, to vaccinate five-year-olds. Yet I, there were discussions about doing that here in, in Livingston County. I, I'm just, I'm, that greatly troubles me. So anyway, I think somebody that has a clinical knowledge, experience best serves the needs of the citizens of Livingston County. The, the last point I would make before I relinquish the microphone is the current health officer talked about making decisions so not to get sued. Didn't want to end up like Governor Snyder getting sued up for the Flint water crisis. And that, you know what? That troubles me because you're making decisions and, you know, okay, I'm, I'm just going to follow suit. I'm just going to do what the CDC says because I don't want to get sued. And I, I, that just, that troubles me. And I'm not saying that Mr. Bolang would necessarily do that. But I want to know with greater certainty on, on, on what his philosophy is. And I want a chance to compare Mr. Bolang's philosophy to other people that could be equally qualified. I, I just, I, I think I, I want to satisfy my curiosity. And I think I'm doing, by looking around, we are doing the right thing on behalf of citizens of Livingston County. I'll yield the floor and ask if there are any follow-up questions, comments. I'd like to talk. Commissioner Dricke?
If the numbers are correct, it appears that because we have an administrative health officer without a degree, which I don't think is something we're in love with, but I think credentials are important, we have to, by somebody's rule, hire Dr. Marquez at an extra 106,000 bucks a year. Well, if we spent the 21 and found other candidates that would not require us to spend the 106 more, it would be fiscally irresponsible not to at least have the choice. We still may end up liking and respecting Matt, which we all do. But we should have the choice instead of just say to ourselves, well, that's impossible. We can't do that. So I'm leaning toward a search.
Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Plank?
So I'm, I'm thinking that this is a really tough decision. Because Sheriff Murphy said something that sort of hit home for me. I can't judge Matt on what the previous health officer has done or has not done. I wouldn't want someone doing that to me as I move into a position in my personal life. And so I think about that. And I think about the time when, when it was rough on some of our businesses or, and we, Matt suggested giving back, not, or not paying some sort of a fee. And that was amazing. And I think like Commissioner Helsnerman said, nobody, nobody came up with that except him. So, I mean, I, kudos for that. You know, I feel like some of us, and I'm going to put myself in that bucket, some of the people that have been on the Zoom calls in this room, not everybody, because he has lots of people have known him, but don't, don't know Matt at all. And passing judgment on someone who, they don't know how he's going to react to the next pandemic, God forbid. And, you know, what would he have done differently? I mean, and maybe these are some of the questions that for me I would like to hear is, what, what did the current health director do that he would have done differently? And what did the current health director do that he would have just agreed with? And he thought that that was the best thing to do? I also want to address something about the schools. I think that the mistakes that were made had to do with communication. Because the schools made the mandates, not the health director, on sending kids home. And some of you were in this room or on Zoom when Mitch Zajak asked those point-blank questions to her. And she said, it is the school's choice to do it. So we're sort of throwing her under the bus for that. I will throw her under the bus for saying, I felt like the communication was lacking, that the message wasn't correct. But I feel as if she was sort of, I want to say the word exonerated that day when Mitch Zajak did the point-blank questions and asking her, would you force the schools to do this or mask mandates or any of that? And she said, no, I can recommend, but I can't force them to do that. That is their policy. So I feel very strongly that, that some people are, like, passing judgment on Matt and they don't even know him. I mean, I don't really know Matt. I've met him before in a, sort of passing through the health department, getting a tour of, of the building and meeting a lot of the people. But never did I sit down with him and ask him, what do you think, Matt? Do you, are you against medical freedoms? Are you for mask mandates? Are you for this? Not once did I ask him those questions. And I bet there's a lot of people on the Zoom call and in this room who haven't asked him that either. So how are we to judge what he's going to do? And what scares me is that if we do go out and we look for someone and they say all the right things, right? Because they really want that job. And we get another pandemic and they do exactly the opposite or worse, then where are we, right? Where are, we don't have any guarantees. So, I mean, I appreciate everyone's perspective on here. And I really listened hard because I was trying to decide what I was going to do and how I would vote. And, you know, initially I believe in options and I believe that we should, you know, my thought was maybe we should look outside, right? But the more I hear people who know Matt, talking on behalf of Matt and singing his praises, I feel like he would do the right thing. I feel like he would protect our medical freedoms. That's how I feel. And I'm, I'm, you know, and I hear what Doug Helsnerman is saying. And to me, I think that's minor in the big scheme of things. That little bit of money that we pay out to have someone who's qualified, who's been in the county for a long time, who's well respected by the people that work around him every day, I think that's minor. I think that the important part is the leadership that he brings. And that's proven just by some of the high-ranking people who have said really nice things about him, including Commissioner Jockier and Sheriff Murphy. And I'm sure that if you brought some other people in here that have been at the county, they would be singing his praises as well. So, so for me, I, I would want to know, and I know this is not the place, but to know what Matt's thinking about mask mandates, vaccine mandates, vaccinating five-year-olds, because I can tell you right now, I'm totally against that. And, and I, I would hope that he would be too. But I also know that whoever we bring in here at any point, they can say whatever they want you to hear. And I've, I've interviewed and I've hired people in my profession and thinking I got the right candidate. And I can tell you, six months later, I'm kicking myself in the you-know-what to get those people out as soon as possible because they don't align with how I or my expectations and requirements. And I'll tell you, some of the best people I've ever hired are people that come with a recommendation from people that I respect in my profession. So those turned out to be the best. And I kind of almost put Matt right into that same category through recommendations. So I'm unclear how Matt would be with medical freedoms. But I think that if he had an opportunity and I was talking to him in person, I probably could find that out pretty quickly. And I think that people who are judging before we make a decision here today, I think if they would have picked up the phone and called Matt, I think Matt would have been happy to speak to those people and letting him know or letting them know exactly how he feels. So this is definitely a tough decision for me. I know that there are a lot of people who, on the calls and stuff, are advocating to, to go outside. But I, I, and I thought that's exactly how I wanted to go when I walked into this meeting. But just hearing people saying great things about Matt. And, and I think about what Sheriff Murphy said, that Diane McCormick never issued an order ever. And I think we forget that. Do I think things could have been handled a little better? Absolutely. But we all make mistakes and this was a first time for everybody. So I think Matt probably learned from that as well. And I would hope, moving forward, if appointed to the health director position, I would hope that he would listen to the people of Livingston County. And I know there's two sides, so it's very difficult. And I, I felt really bad for him tonight, sitting there, kind of getting beat up by some people. And, but you have to be tough. And, and I think he has that. So to make a long story short, which I know I just didn't do, I am going to support appointing Matt to that position. Thank you.
Any other commissioners who haven't spoke to the issue that would like to? Otherwise, we'll go for round two if there's anybody else. Commissioner Reader?
I'm a firm believer in filling the position and not the person. So you have to know who it is that you're putting in there. And sometimes you have to compare and contrast. That's what we do in every election. Each one of us will be compared to whoever's running against us. And there is that checks and balance. I know that that goes against the other factor that we have here of, if you're a deputy director for 20 years, does it automatically give you the step up? I think that's one of the first decisions we have to make. The other third factor, as I see it, is we have a lot of money being spent by two different types of directors. I know the jail doesn't really have a psychiatrist on board and they deal with mentally ill people all the time. And medications are probably not what they should be because they're not given by a psychiatrist. Same can be said here. Is she more of an administrator, is Ms. McCormick more of an administrator? Or does she in fact have the clinical side of experience that Matt would have or not have? I don't know the answers to those questions. I do not know Matt. I don't know what his background is. I know what other people say about him. And I don't doubt it at all. I think he's probably learned on the job a lot of different things, as we all do. But nobody's guaranteed a step up. It doesn't matter if you're a secretary or your boss, one of us, not even the president. So I think everybody has to be scrutinized in one way or the other. To find- to be scrutinized in one way or the other, to find out the answers to these questions that we want answered. What is his position on medical freedom? What are these other positions? Now, I may have been neglectful in calling him and talking to him about all these things, but I don't think it should just be between a commissioner and him. I think it needs to be done in a public forum, so all you folks can hear that too. So I guess I don't like to spend money, especially taxpayer money. Well, I don't like to spend my own money. But I think it might be worth it in this case because it is such an important position for us to open it up, see what's out there, see what the salaries are. Maybe we can get a doctor that would fulfill both positions instead of just one. And we wouldn't have to split somebody with Washington County, and we might get more uh for our buck. I don't know that. But unless we look into it, we're not ever gonna know. And that's nothing against Matt. He may come through this with flying colors, and I hope he does. Because he sounds like a wonderful person to be in charge of the department. But I still think the resumes will say a whole lot as well. And I think we owe it to our constituents to give them both sides of the story and then make a decision. So I'm uh for putting it out and seeing what we have available. And I didn't have that position when I sat down today.
Commissioner Helsnerman, did you have a follow up comment?
Yes. First of all, six years ago, when I successfully ran to be commissioner, I was as skeptical of government and Livingston County government as the most skeptical skeptical person that has spoken tonight. And you know who the first person I talked to in Livingston County government? It was Matt. Because I, he takes care of the wells in the septics. How many of you have had the privilege of redoing a septic field? Or redoing a well? You want somebody in that position that's not headstrong? And so, you know, I left that meeting for Matt feeling much better about the county and much better about uh about that. You know, I The other thing we have to understand is the the county Board of Commissioners makes the decision, but the State Board of Health has the final word. They can either, they can veto what we do. From what I, yeah, that's my understanding. It may not that's my understand. At least they have, they have some input in in that particular in decision. I think it's to find a freedom minded person with a high medical degree, those are rare birds. I think we, we, we would be fortunate beyond all measure if we could find somebody who filled both positions and felt was as freedom minded as as we would like them to be. The the problem is no matter how much freedom minded, you need somebody there that has judgment to know when it's the time to call a quarantine. Because there are times when a quarantine is absolutely necessary. No matter what your freedom position is, we'd better have somebody that has the guts to do that if it is necessary. And you know, I'm, I'm I'm happy to go out, but I'm happy. I, the, the thing is uh, tonight, we're not deciding whether Matt is the person. There has, there's a process that's going to happen. And uh, the question is, do we go through the process? And Matt's part of that process, or we go through the process with only considering Matt unless we think no for Matt. So, you know, again, it's not so anyways, that's it. Someone trying to help me? I don't know.
Any other commissioners? I want to touch on um a couple of things. I want to elaborate a little bit more on what troubled me the most about the um health department's role in quarantining healthy students. Ye- yes, the um, the health officer clearly stated it was the decision of the schools. But it is my opinion uh from the totality of what I saw um that they wouldn't, the schools wouldn't have been effective in in doing that if it wasn't enabled by the health department. All of the emails saying your student, your healthy student has to stay away from school were issued by the health department. So you have the imprimatur of the health department seal. And um I, I, the parents were confused. They were coming here complaining to us. Uh, and they didn't know who to go. They, they got the, in my, I think I used the term in one of the debates, the government runaround. Well, it's not the schools, it's not the health department. Well, what's, what is a parent to do? That troubled me greatly. It was I, I'm gonna call it extra legal. Um, the health officer had the ability to quarantine anybody that they, that she chose to. But if she would have done that and not done this extra legal stuff, there were um due process rights that citizens would have. Though if if she were to formally quarantine somebody, the um, somebody who objected to that could take them to court. And the rights of the individual would have been upheld in in a court of law, somebody that's a neutral third party. The parents and the students that got screwed over by that decision were also screwed over of their rights. That, that troubles me greatly. In looking at Matt's resume, and and Matt's here, so he could correct me if I'm, I, I didn't, I don't believe he has a master's of public health. And that is a requirement, a listed requirement in the rules promulgated by the state health department. Now, they can waive that uh if they so desire in the, in looking at the totality of somebody's credentials. And I think that's reasonable, but not having that master's of public health. We, we ought to look around and see if we can have somebody that meets all the credentials without requiring the waiver. That's, that's my opinion. When I, I did take the time to chat with Mr. Bolang. I wouldn't call it an interview. I'd call it a half an hour discussion. And unless I wrote this down wrong, and I'll, I'll, I'll defer, I'll, I'll I will, um when I asked the question, um, would he do anything differently with regards to the pandemic? The answer I remember is no. So I mean, which is good from the standpoint, he wouldn't issue any mask mandates. I'm, I'm very grateful for that. But uh, when he said no, that means, well, the schools would have done what they did and there would be no, I mean, um, and the health department would help enable that wrong course of action. So that troubles me. For my colleagues that um are certain that Matt is the right guy, and I'm not saying Matt is not the right guy. I'm just saying I want to look around. For the, for my colleagues that are that certain, then let's open it up and let's, let's prove that he's the right guy, that we've looked around. And yes, uh, Matt Bolang's the right guy. But to say that we know that there's nobody better, that um, there's nobody with better credentials, I, I, I just think that's not the decision that I would prefer. Um, I'll yield the mic to anybody else who wants to chime in for a follow up comment. Uh, Commissioner Gross.
I think the one of the questions before us has to do with the perceived lack of qualifications for Mr. Bolang, excuse me. It's my understanding that the State Board of Health has in essence uh blessed his appointment to be our medical officer. And if they've done that, um, knowing that he doesn't have a master's degree in public health, I, I can accept that. They've got their, their reasons. I, I think I think by overlooking him as a candidate and insisting on conducting a search, not only is it gonna cost, cost us some money, it's gonna take quite a bit of time. And I think it sends the wrong message to our employees, uh, particularly those who are are working their butts off trying to get ahead in this organization. I came through the world of General Motors where I worked my butt off in times it paid off and other times it didn't. So I, I can appreciate how I think I can appreciate how our employees are going to look at the situation, particularly if we select a candidate from outside. We're gonna have over the next year several opportunities to appoint people to fill leadership positions. And I would think at this point in time, they're wondering, do I really wanna, do I really want to do this? Do I really want to go through this? We've got the bird in the hand. I don't know that we need to have two from the bush.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close this. I, I appreciate um everybody's point of view. I appreciate that we can have a civil discussion on an important item and not be um at each other's throat. So uh, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 12 on the agenda. It's resolutions for consideration. The first resolution is 2022 dash zero six dash zero six eight. It's a resolution authorizing the county treasurer to establish Fund 237 opioid settlement fund. Is there a motion? So move, Helsnerman. Motion by Commissioner Helsnerman, support by Commissioner Griffith. Any further discussion on this one? Questions from commissioners? This one requires a roll call vote.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Zajac is absent. Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
And Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Um, next one is 2022 dash zero six dash zero six nine. It's a resolution opti- uh optimizing election integrity as it pertains to the acceptance of unregulated private monies for funding elections. Is there a motion?
So move.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Plank, support by Commissioner Helsnerman. I wanted to introduce my colleagues to um a gentleman from the Thomas More Society, um, who has done lots of um research on this issue. I think he can kind of clear the air. Eric Cardle is a lawyer um who's been battling on this issue, fighting this issue, not, not just in Michigan, but in Wisconsin also. And then so I asked him to take you know, maybe five or 10 minutes and brief us. And if, if you had questions for um, if commissioners had questions, you could ask Mr. Cardle.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Eric Cardle. I'm a licensed attorney in Minnesota and Wisconsin. I'm St. Paul based. I fly to testify at the county board hearing tonight. Uh, Thomas More Society is my patron. I'm in private practice, but I'm a special counsel for them. Graduated from Harvard College, University of Chicago Law School. I spent the last 30 years representing citizens suing the government, not because my clients didn't like the government, but we want to improve the government. I've had over 300 court appeals, federal and state courts. Election integrity is one of the subject areas I've worked in. I've had two cases go to the US Supreme Court. We've won. So the county board uh resolution I did not draft, I, I just reviewed it. Um, basically, the position is no private money for election administration in the county, but it still can be applied for. And one of the legal background points I wanted to provide was in the last 18 months, 20 states have enacted laws banning uh private money for election administration. Though some of those 20 states are big states, uh Texas, Florida, Ohio, Arizona, Georgia, and so forth. Uh, it was represented tonight that the uh, the private financing of election administration, like it did in 2020, would be legal in 2022. But in those states, it's absolutely forbidden. And so I counted the money that the uh Center for Tech and Civic Life gave to these states, and about half that money would be prohibited in the 2022 cycle because those states have passed laws prohibiting it. Does that make sense? So it's important to know that you're not on fringe here. Additionally, there are six states that the state legislatures passed the legislation and the governors vetoed. Now, in Kansas, they overrode the veto. That was one of the 20 states. But critically, five states, including Michigan, Pennsylvania, and Wisconsin, you know, the laws were vetoed. And so it has been controversial. I don't want to suggest that, but 18 months is a short period of time for state legislatures to move so quickly. In one state, Wisconsin, where I've worked in, Walworth County, in light of the governor's veto there of the ban on election administration bill, Walworth County passed an ordinance like this. And the Wisconsin Voters Alliance is working with other counties to replicate what happened in Walworth County. And currently, about two dozen counties are considering uh adopting similar resolutions in Wisconsin. Here, Livingston County would be the first. Uh, but many uh groups want to promote this policy because they think it's good public policy. Now, there, there's a second point here, and that's with respect to the fact that the the resolution you're considering still allows for accepting private money for election administration. And that's something I can talk about because of legal compliance. So what we saw in Wisconsin uh in 2020 was five mayors negotiated with Center for Tech and Civic Life, $8.8 million for election administration. $216,500 of that was for absentee ballot drop boxes. Uh, in January of 2022, the absentee ballot drop boxes were found by a Waukesha County District Court, Circuit Court, to be legally unauthorized. And now that's before the Wisconsin Supreme Court. Uh, they decided four to three on a preliminary motion not to allow the absentee ballot drop boxes be used at the April 5th, 2022 election. So the problem when we make a mistake, you know, the government makes a mistake, uh, that's going to happen, mistakes, legal mistakes, is it's kind of acceptable. People accept that. But when it's a privately funded legal mistake, like $216,500 from Center for Tech and Civic Life paying for absentee ballot drop boxes be used in those Wisconsin five cities, Milwaukee Mass and Green Bay, Racine and Kenosha, and then it's found to be illegal, it got quite frankly, just stinks. And so the point is, those grant conditions are important. And here you have a very good way to review grant conditions because it goes through your committee first, then comes to the county board. And you should have heightened scrutiny when taking private money for election administration, because if there's a mistake and you're taking private money to fund election illegalese like happened in Wisconsin, it's bad for everyone. You lose confidence in the election. Another example, and the federal compliance review would be under the equal protection clause. President Obama in the 2012 election won a very important case. Uh, Ohio allowed three extra days for military voters to vote in Ohio. And he, he won that case because they were giving a benefit to a group of people, military voters, that no one else would get. So the Obama campaign argued that's a violation of equal protection clause to benefit a certain group of voters and not others, just like suppressing the vote of one group of voters would be. And so the Obama case would would suggest that in order to treat all voters similarly in Michigan, that the government should do it because the government could administer the money. If you have different localities, counties, cities, whatever, taking different amounts of money and presenting different types of in-person absentee voting opportunities, that could be an equal protection violation under the Obama case from US Court Appeals for the Sixth Circuit, which includes Michigan. So the idea here is with the legal compliance, when you are offered private money for election administration, that you should be very deliberate and review the conditions carefully, so you don't make the mistake in Wisconsin and you don't violate the precedent from the Sixth Circuit, the Obama campaign case in 2012. so you don't make the mistake in Wisconsin and you don't violate the precedent from the Sixth Circuit, the Obama campaign case in 2012. That's all I have. I don't really have any. I was trying to present the facts so you can make a good decision. And I'm not rendering any opinion on the 2020 election. I'm only looking forward, and I think that's what the resolution suggests. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Cardle? No questions. Thank you very much for all those. Any other comments on the resolution?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I believe we inserted the word in the third paragraph, first line. County did not accept any of Zuckerberg's funding. I think we inserted the county did not accept any private funding at the last committee.
There was a motion to strike the first four whereas's.
And before that, I believe we struck the, we inserted the word private before we did the striking of the four paragraphs.
Yeah, I don't recall, but I mean, if you could make a motion, we could amend what's
I will then make a motion that we amend the third whereas to remove the word, the name Zuckerberg's and have it read. Livingston County did not accept any private funding.
Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed amendment passes? I would like to offer an amendment in the, to be inserted prior to the last, be it further resolved, that it'd be another be it further resolved, be it further resolved, the Livingston County Board of Commissioners support a permanent source of state funding to directly support the local administration of elections. That was something requested by State Representative Ann Boland, so I would make the motion. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Plank. Any discussion on that amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed amendment passes? We are ready, I think, to vote on the amended resolution. All those in favor of the amended, twice amended resolution signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. Let's see here. I gotta switch my screen around here. Item C, Resolution 2021-06-070. It's a resolution authorizing acceptance of the county clerk's 2021 annual report. Is there a motion?
So move, Helserman.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Griffith. Would ask for an amendment to be offered to change the number from 2021-06-070 to 2022. There's a typo in there. Is there?
Support.
So we have a motion to amend and support. All those in favor of that amendment signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any discussion on the acceptance of the county clerk's annual report? Seeing none.
Just thank you for all the county clerks. Great work. We appreciate it. Good report.
Thank you. I do have just a couple slides. If I could just have a moment, I'm certainly not going to read the entire annual report. It is in the public packet for the public to access. But I truly owe a debt of gratitude to the staff who puts in a lot of hours and effort with the with the work that we do. Our vital records division, if you look at the numbers that are included in the annual report, you will see that statistically, we are very consistent with our numbers. I'm just going to try to get this to work. I'm not sure it is. I love technology.
I believe it's the fifth page.
Get that to work. Or just go ahead and advance it. Can you advance it? It's just not working. I am very proud of the efforts that we have put in to be fiscally conservative. And on this slide, you will see that we had a favorable revenue variance for 2021 in the amount of almost $62,000. And I'm looking at the general fund budgets here. And you will see that on the expense side with the four budgets that we manage, there was a favorable variance. We returned almost $88,500 to the general fund. When you add those, the excess revenues and the favorable expense variance, we improved the general fund by over $150,000 in 2021. So we truly try to be responsible with the taxpayers' money that we are given and try to be good stewards with that. We continue to have goals for 2022 and 2023. The next resolution up will be an update to the vital records indexing and imaging software. 2021 was busy in the vital records division. We also had the redistricting work that we worked on in 2021. At the court end, they're no longer, JIS will no longer be supporting the case management system that we're using. So we are working on converting to a new case management system now. The beginning phase of that is underway. That's a big change for our staff. We are working on the installation of a kiosk at the Brighton Courthouse, which will allow a virtual clerk connection to people who are in the Brighton Courthouse. They will be able to connect directly with the people in the judicial center. We implemented new records management standards related to personal identifying information. And 2023, we start the automatic set aside legislation. So that's going to have a very big impact on the clerk's office at the judicial center. Elections, we are looking forward to making our move from the first floor to the lower level of the historic courthouse. Hopefully, maybe by the end of this week, we'll actually be in there. The beginning of this year, we assisted the county canvassers and we completed an inspection of all of the ballot containers countywide in Livingston County. We will be starting our election inspector training, which is required for every two years. I anticipate we will be training well over 1,000 election inspectors between the August and November elections. And then we do continue to update the county clerk's website. But we have a specific area of election security on the elections page that I strongly encourage people to take a look at. We try to answer questions related to election security. It is very important to us. So those are some of the goals that we're working on. And I am happy to answer questions if the commission has any questions for us. But I really do would like to recognize Joe Bridgman, who is here for the elections division. Joe runs. He's our election coordinator. I cannot thank Kristi enough. Kristi does a fantastic job managing the circuit court end. And then Amy with all of the technology that she manages in the vital record. So fantastic crew. And they each have team members behind them, supporting them. So thank you.
Questions from commissioners? I have one question. So the kiosk in the Brighton Court, there has been discussion, recent discussion about, you know, shutting down the Brighton Court and transferring everything over to the, you know, the West complex. Is that kiosk going to be usable somewhere else?
Yes. You'll have to go use a microphone, Kristi.
It should be.
Yes, but we purchased that with grant money. We made sure that we got a portable so that it's a desktop portable and we can take it anywhere we want. And our plan is, is that if Brighton ends up coming to Howell, we'll put it in the hallway and people can use it for that purpose. It takes payments. We'll eventually build onto it so that when we get into e-filing, people can scan documents into our system right from the hallway. It's really going to be used, we anticipate, more by pro per people than by the attorneys.
Thank you. Commissioner Helserman?
Question for Clerk Huntley. When you had the screen up a moment ago, you were talking about training of election inspectors.
Yes.
And you anticipate 1,000 between, you would train 1,000 people between August and the November election?
Correct.
Are you going to be doing any training of people prior to the primary election in August?
Yes, that's what we will be training for is election inspectors for the August primary election. So I think we currently have at least 14 to 16 classes scheduled for, at a minimum for August. All election inspectors are required to have two-year certification training. We only do that in even numbered years. So this training certificates will be good for two years for the individuals that we train at this time. But we have a lot of classes scheduled for that the people will be working the August election. And then we will offer additional training before the November.
So apparently, there's going to be some number of people that will be trained prior to the August primary. And then you anticipate training another 1,000 prior to November. Is that?
I would anticipate between the two elections, we will run at least 1,000. It could be anywhere from 1,000 to 1,600, I think, has been the most election inspectors that we have trained in an even numbered year. Correct.
And what would be the function of these inspectors?
They are actually working in the polls on election day or they're processing, they are working in the absentee voter counting board. So these Michigan election law requires that the county clerk provide training before every election. And we must provide the training for any jurisdiction with 10,000 or fewer residents. We provide for consistency and for the betterment of the entire Livingston County elections. We provide the training for all of our jurisdictions, regardless of their size. And then they can, they absolutely have the right to do additional training if they so choose. And that's what a lot of ours will do. We provide the two-year certification training. And then the city or township clerks will provide additional training as they see is required.
So would all of the people who are serving as election inspectors at every polling location, would they be residents of that particular area?
Not necessarily. You do not have to, as a matter of fact, if they are on the ballot, you know, let's say we have precinct delegates coming in August, you cannot work in your own precinct. So once you have your two-year certification training, you can take that anywhere, as long as that city or township clerk will bring you on as an election inspector.
So is that the up to the township clerks to make that decision on who they're going to have at their particular polling locations?
Correct. And the people working in the polling locations are employed by the city or township clerks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of accepting the county clerk's 2021 annual report signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign? Resolution passes. Next one is 2022-06-071. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Fiddler Technologies for the Apex Vital Records Document Management Software System. Is there a motion?
Motion, Smith.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Griffith. There was an amendment that was offered. It was on your, by your seat. Essentially, the amendment would extend the maintenance agreement and going, instead of one year one to five, to include years six through 10. There's some cost savings with that. Clerk Huntley, if you'd want to elaborate on that further.
Yes, I did, you know, reached out to the vendor and was working to get beneficial pricing. And if the county is willing to prepay the, it's called Apex Lifecycle. It's the maintenance of the of the software program. If we prepay years one through five, we can secure some savings. It will also allow a lower cost for that in years six through 10. So it is a complete decision of the board. My recommendation is to prepay years one through five and secure these savings. But basically, that's what this changes. It's a lot of changes just to move to prepaying for years one through five in the maintenance of the software.
So I would ask if there's commissioner interested in offering an amendment, which on this case, the amendment would be, I would think, just for simplicity, to substitute this whole document for what was in there as opposed to trying to change the individual. So if there's interest on the part of commissioners?
I would move that we substitute the amended copy, the wording of that in whole for the original motion.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Griffith. Discussion on the amendment. Commissioner Plank?
Just a quick question. I'm sure that you're going to have this technology for quite some time, but let's just say something happens in year three. Is it in the contract that you'll get back your paid funds for the following two years out of that contract? Or are you locked in for the one through five years?
At this point in time, the contract has not been reviewed by Cole Stoker, but we can certainly make sure that that is included, that those would be refunded for
Whatever reason.
Whatever, whatever reason.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Commissioner Gross?
I'd like to point out to my colleagues that when this resolution was presented at general government just a week ago, it was a smaller package. The total amount of money designated was $120,000. And there was a question about where that money would come from. It was indicated that it could be, this is a potential ARPA eligible project. And it was pointed out to the committee at that time that an ARPA request had been submitted to the administration. And upon checking, I found that that ARPA request totaled $110,000. And at general government just a week ago, it was $120,000. And the question came up about where the money is coming from. And during the course of discussion, it was mentioned that we could go through a reallocation process that we would spend county money to do this project, to sign this contract. And then after the fact, we would play numbers games and get the money out of ARPA. Now, we're looking at a package that's over $200,000 for a longer period of time. With years six through 10 being priced at $16,000, previously, years two through five, the price was $15,000. So I fail to see the savings. So I fail to see the savings. And also, it was pointed out that in the out years, two through five, there would be collection of fees, et cetera, that would offset most of that fifteen thousand dollars. And being a past accountant, I'm a little concerned about what I consider to be fuzzy accounting here. And I'm particularly disturbed by the prospect of reallocation. Spending ARPA money now, but not calling it ARPA. And then after the fact, coming back and pulling it out of ARPA. And what's especially troubling about that is a lot of people had submitted ARPA requests, internal and external. We've got over a hundred requests. And it seems to me that by approving this resolution, we're pushing this particular request to the top of the list. And there are probably a lot of other very worthwhile requests for ARPA funds that are going to be scratching their heads and saying, wait a minute, how do we just drop down a few notches? So I'm troubled by this amendment. I'm troubled by this resolution on many, many aspects. And I just want my colleagues to be aware of that, and I will not be supporting the amendment.
Commissioner, may I, may I address the concerns that were just vocalized? The change in the pricing, normally, when you have an increase with the software maintenance with this vendor, it's usually a three percent increase per year. So when I'm locking in years one through five at fifteen thousand dollars, I'm saving the county three percent per year. Or the county, the Board of Commissioners, it's your decision to save the taxpayers three percent by year by locking in and prepaying years five. The additional increase, moving the total package from a five-year to a ten-year, I again secured a steady price for year six through ten maintenance at sixteen thousand, twenty dollars per year for the next five years, saving the incremental three percent each year six through ten. So therefore, if we move this to a ten-year project, we are saving the taxpayers a significant amount of money by locking in these rates rather than letting them see the three percent. And it may even be more. I will tell you that the vendor commented with the inflation being what it has, that the actual three percent may actually go up even higher than that. So in, in light of the inflation and what is normal, I thought this was a good use of taxpayer dollars, locking in these fees. Fifteen thousand for years one through five, we must prepay that. And then annually, year six through ten will be locked in, in the written contract before the board chair is authorized to say securing that at sixteen thousand and twenty dollars per year. So we are avoiding all of those price increases annually. So it is a board decision though, but I wanted to explain why you see the amendment that you did. So that's the best explanation I can offer.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. But a three percent savings is four hundred and some dollars a year. For four years, we're looking at roughly two thousand dollars. But years six through ten, we're paying at least a thousand dollars a year more. So I don't see where the three percent justifies anything. In the long run, we're paying more money.
Question, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Smith.
So my, my question is the timing of the payments. We're going to, under this proposal, we pay upfront for the system fee and then the years two through five, and we pay that upfront. But in year six, or six through ten, then paid at the anniversary, the fifth year anniversary, in bulk as well? Or are those annual installments?
That's going to be paid annually. I'm going to have the, I'm going to ensure that the contract, when reviewed by Cole Stoker, shows that one as an annual payment.
Other questions, Commissioner Smith? Anybody else? Commissioner Drick.
When I read the first therefore, no, the second, therefore be resolved. You don't currently have any money in your budget.
That is correct.
You have to look to IT for a little, and you have to look to general contingency, right?
This year would be completely paid by either general fund contingency. Or however, however, that is Hillary and Cindy's preference, is general fund contingency. Correct.
Okay, so to start with, it's not in the budget for the year. Second, it's true that it's on the ARPA list, but it's a much lower amount, right?
It was on the ARPA list for a one-year project. I never anticipated putting a ten-year project forward.
Because now you identified and leaned on them for discounts.
Correct.
I get that. When I listened to government, general government, I, you thought that there was some value in not waiting, in not waiting. And there was a fear of some inflation, correct? Or did I get that wrong?
No, there are many other counties who are utilizing their ARPA dollars. And if I sign with this vendor to implement this project, we're already looking at a December start time. As they, as they, as they sign more counties to this program, we will become later at being able to launch our project. So it's a timing issue.
But this has been a system that's been slowly, probably degrading since oh four, right?
There have been no significant improvements since two thousand and four with the system.
Help me with this. If there are a hundred or so ARPA projects, and this was on the list for ARPA at an amount, won't we be telling everybody else on the list to get in here next week with a resolution? Because you'd be the precedent?
Commissioners, you know, I spoke to the Chair of FAM and Administrator Bird and the Chair of the Board, and I asked, what is your preference? I would like to get this rolling if, if I'm going to do this. So I was asked to bring this forward. That's all I did, is I bring this forward. It makes sense. It's a project that needs to be done. The funding for it can be either general fund dollars or ARPA. That is a complete decision of the board. And the fees that will, you know, in years two through five, when we get a better understanding of how this flows, we will be able to recover that annual fee through what we charge for certified records. So there will be a cost analysis done to ensure, according to Michigan law, that the, the fees we charge for the certified copies covers the cost of the program. So the funding of it is completely discretionary to the board.
How do I avoid the phone call from another department that says, I played favorites and put you at the head of the line for ARPA? Do I just hand him the resolution?
Do you want to ask that?
If I can, you're not, you're not approving this as an ARPA expenditure right now. You're, you're saying whether or not you want to do this project. And if you say yes, and you pass this, the funding is not going to come from ARPA unless you decide later on, when you have a full list of ARPA requests to choose from, that you think that you want to reallocate it as an ARPA expense. And so you're not making the ARPA decision tonight. It's, we were asked, FAM, too, we were asked to highlight, as we pass things, what could be ARPA eligible? And this is ARPA eligible, but you are not committing ARPA funds. It is absolutely, it's eligible in at least two categories. And so at the end of June, we stopped taking external requests, and in July, we stopped taking internal requests. You're going to get all those. And then if at that time, you think, you know what, we should fund that with ARPA, then the decision will be made at that time. But it's not really cutting in the line because you're not making that ARPA decision now. It's complicated. It's confusing. ARPA is very challenging, but if anyone is concerned about that, I'll be happy to talk with them. We have, we have approved things for ARPA already, a handful of things. But this, this is not committing ARPA dollars to this project. And so the idea is, if you like what, what this would do, then we're going to do it with or without ARPA. We'll do it in our general budget process if we like it. And then a few months from now, as you're looking at ARPA request, you could say, wait a second, we actually would like to reallocate funds back to the general fund with ARPA because we want that to be an ARPA expenditure. And so there, there isn't a decision right now, and I don't have the amended version, but I don't think it committed ARPA funds now. It would be, it's just noted that it could be used by ARPA if the board decides that. But that'll be a decision that you make. It won't be a decision that anybody else makes.
And we're in June of the year. Some of the contingency may or may not have been used up till now. What's left? And is it enough to cover this?
Yeah, and I may have to phone a friend with Hillary on the line because the contingency word is a little confusing. We have, excuse me, last checked, we had, I think, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand left in contingency for this year. We've only spent about forty-five or forty-six thousand. My understanding is we're not committing all of our contingency funds to this. Hillary, are you still there? Could you sort of clarify the way that the budget works on this to the general fund?
Yes, I am here. Good evening. Yes, the current available budget and contingency is just under two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. The way the resolution is written is that we will do a budget transfer from contingency into the Clerk's General Fund Org. We do not ever pay for expenses out of contingency. Always go to whoever is utilizing them for their projects. If you choose to fund more than the first five years, that is a decision if we want to take it all from contingency or if we want to overall amend the bottom line general fund budget.
So am I correct in understanding that if we funded everything at the two hundred thousand, we'd be chopping our two hundred and sixty-eight thousand contingency down substantially, correct?
That is correct.
You could also amend the budget to have it come from general fund balance, which is an option as well. Typically, when we make budget, thirty-seven million or so. No, that's, that's our general fund, fund balance. That's our savings account right now, which is about sixty percent. We aim to keep it at fifty. I mean, more is good, but it's, it's very healthy right now. And so Hillary, I hope I didn't just complicate things, but could they clarify that it could come from general fund balance if they, if we didn't want to spend down contingency to that, to that extent?
Yes, that is correct.
Commissioner Gross.
Let me get this straight. If, if we approve this, in order to get the two hundred thousand dollar price tag, we would have to pay that full amount this year?
No.
How much would we have to pay this year?
This year would be the one hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay. And whenever we get around to deliberating on what to use ARPA funding for, and somehow this particular request doesn't make it in that process, as Commissioner Drick has just mentioned, we, we are putting, we're expending a hundred and twenty thousand of our contingency for this year, and we're committing another eighty-some thousand over the next five years afterwards. So basically, we're, we're going to be spending unbudgeted funds and dipping into general contingency or general fund in order to do it.
Commissioner Howserman.
In my mind, this should be a decision made on its own merit without consideration of, of ARPA funds. I, if ARPA funds covers it, then I guess we won't do something else, but I think that's a decision later on. If, if anything, you know, my question is, why have we gone since two thousand and four with a program, almost twenty years, that has not improved? It seems to me that this is well overdue, and this is a very worthy project. This, these, this pricing, you know, we're talking about how big it is. I think an argument could be made that this is very small compared to what it could be for a program of this nature and of the value that'll add to our county. To me, this is I would do whatever we need to do to make this happen. I just think we should do it on the merits of this particular thing. We should not be, you know, my question is, I think we should do it. And then the question is, where do we fund it from? You know, that's, that's another discussion, and maybe we should have that discussion now. But at this point, ARPA funds, we don't, is ARPA available? But tonight, we're not going to say we're using ARPA funds for it. I think we need to look at the project and say, we can do it, we ought to do it. It's, it's way overdue. To me, it's a slam dunk. It's only, how do we, how do we make it work? You know, it's, it's again, one of those things of, why wasn't it on the strategic planning or whatever for, you know, capital improvement? Or whatever, that's a whole other discussion, but I think that I, I'm in, I am completely in favor of this. And then let's ask, answer these questions that are coming up. I don't think they're prohibitive questions, questions that prohibit us from doing this.
Commissioner Howserman, can I just say that I did fill out a capital improvement project form for this? However, the total cost is, without the maintenance, is only forty-five thousand. It doesn't qualify for a capital improvement project. So I've tried every angle and failed.
Okay. Even more reason to go forward with it.
Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment passes. Now we're ready to vote on the amended resolution. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the amended resolution signify by saying aye.
This requires a roll call.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yes, yes. So this one requires a roll call.
Give me just a moment here. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Howserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
No.
Commissioners, Ajax is absent. Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
No.
And Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, item E, Resolution 2022-06-072. It's a resolution authorizing the entrance into a participating addendum through NASPole Value Point Cooperative Purchasing Program and Authorization of Value Point Cooperative Purchasing Program and Authorization of a twenty-two to twenty-two three stock computer hardware order. That was long. Is there a motion?
Support Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Plank. This was talked about in committee, but are there further questions, comments from commissioners? Looking around, I don't see any. This one requires a roll call vote.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ajax is absent. Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up is twenty-two-two dash zero-six dash zero-seven-three. It's a resolution authorizing driver reorganization to increase a part-time to a full-time driver position in Veterans Services. Is there a motion?
So move Plank.
Support Smith.
Motion by Commissioner Plank, support by Commissioner Smith. Is there any, this is also chatting in committee, any further discussion, questions? Commissioner Drick.
I listened to the committee, and can I find out what the numbers are for the increase in demand in the second, whereas, do you have statistics as to what the demand increase has been?
I just wanted to double check how we wanted to answer that, so thank you for taking a moment there. From May first to May twentieth, we had seven veterans call that were unable to schedule within LETS services or our Veterans Services for Transport, and those numbers were really unacceptable for us going forward. We pride ourselves in being able to get our veterans to their medical appointments. We've also had an increase of demand in that we have a part-time driver that was not filled afterwards because they retired. So we've had other two part-time drivers that are only authorized at nineteen hours a week, covering those other hours. In talking to the deputy director over at LETS, they had recommended putting in a second driver route to accommodate those requests, especially on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Those are most highest demand for call volume at that time for rides, and that's been indicative for over a year.
Has there been other weeks, or maybe that might be a three-week period, have been other, other three-week periods where veterans couldn't get to where they needed to go?
I could probably get more information for you on that, but from a tracking perspective, the system doesn't really track that as, as it stands. It was really based on word of mouth.
Word of mouth complaints, telephone calls, something like that.
Oh, yes, we've had quite a bit of call volume on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Gross.
I apologize if I'd missed something, but in the first, therefore be resolved, there's the last part of the sentence that says, if awarded, accepts the grant agreement, et cetera, et cetera. Generally, we don't do that because we expect the organization to come back and we approve acceptance separately. Is that correct?
We're discussing the driver position, sir.
Yeah, the Resolution zero-seven-three is going from part-time to full-time driver. Is that the language in there about?
No, it's in zero-seven-four also.
The second, therefore be it resolved, is to ask for any necessary budget amendments to fund the position.
Yep, I saw that, but it seems to me historically, we've not, we've not approved resolutions accepting the grant if awarded at, at the same time as we approve submission of the grant.
I think we need clarification on that, Commissioner, because there's no grant attached to this position.
Yeah, we're, that's in our next resolution.
Yeah.
Currently, we're on the. Whereas, it says Livingston County Veteran Service Grant Application, the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
I'm not looking at the application, sir. We're looking at the driver position.
I'm looking at, at Resolution oh-seventy-four.
No, but we're voting on oh-seventy-three.
We did that already. That was a roll call vote for the driver.
No, we, we are.
Hardware.
That was oh-seven-two.
I'll be happy to explain that situation further for you when we get there.
I apologize, I'm missing something.
It was a different order at general government, and we're looking at it in that order, and I flipped it for this.
Put it together for us, otherwise we'd be here for the.
Other questions or comments from commissioners? See, I lost my place. Is this a roll, this is a roll call vote also?
All right. And clerk.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ajax is absent. Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up is twenty-two-two dash zero-six dash zero-seven-four. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Michigan Veteran Affairs Agency to support Livingston County Veteran Services to enhance and improve operations. Is there a motion?
So move Plank.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Plank, support by Commissioner Helserman. Any questions, discussion on this one? That one has the language in there to accept and, or to apply and accept, so if you wanted to elaborate on that.
I'll be happy to. We found out about the grant deadline was May twentieth, on the Monday beforehand. As you know, our department has been in transition for the last month or so. This was put together to allow us to not only submit that grant application, but also to accept the funds and be in compliance with our county policies.
Questions from commissioners? Another roll call vote.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ajax is absent. Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Two dash zero-six dash zero-seven-five. It's a resolution authorizing village election for the county's veteran services program proposal and certifying ballot language. Is there a motion?
Motion, Smith.
Support Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Plank. Is there any discussion?
This is the one we still need, the wording, we have a proposed amendment, and I would move that we move, substitute this amended resolution for the original.
I'll support that.
Just commentary that I, thank you for clarifying this. This reads much more exacting than the first copy did.
Yeah, yeah, I, I saw the word increase, and I said, this is not an increase. Let's try to get, let's just have true language. So.
This has been reviewed by council, correct? This wording's been reviewed by councils.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the council reworded it. I was happy that they did it, so.
Question, any other questions or comments on the amendment? All, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Amendment passes. We need a vote on the amended resolution. That would be a roll call vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ajax is absent. Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Twenty-two-two dash zero-six dash zero-seven-six. It's a resolution, amending Resolution twenty-one dash eleven dash one-seventy-seven, authorizing capital expenditure for the purchase of a accessible minivan for Veteran Services Department. Is there a motion?
So move Reader.
Support Helserman.
Motion by Commissioner Reader, support by Commissioner Helserman. Any questions on this one? Don't see any. This is a roll call vote also.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ajax is absent. Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
And Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution twenty-two-two dash zero-six dash zero-seven-seven. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Cruisers Incorporated to provide emergency vehicle lighting and equipment installation and maintenance services. Is there a motion?
Support Reader.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Reader. Are there further questions that weren't answered in committee? Looks like not. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Next up is twenty-two-two dash zero-six dash zero-seven-eight. It's a resolution authorizing agreements for preventive maintenance and repairs, major repairs, collision repairs, entire maintenance and entire maintenance and repair for county fleet vehicles. Is there a motion?
Motion, Smith.
Support Reader.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Reader. Are there further questions on this one? Looks like not. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same, opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. Twenty-two-two dash zero-six dash zero-seven-nine. It's a resolution authorizing agreements with Bob Maxi Ford and Roy's Auto Works to provide maintenance and repair services for county-owned transit vehicles. Is there a motion?
So move Plank. Support Reader.
Motion by Commissioner Plank, support by Commissioner Reader. Any further questions or comments on this one? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next up is twenty-two-two dash zero-six dash zero-eighty. It's a resolution, amending Resolution twenty-two dash oh-four dash oh-five-one, authorizing capital expenditure for the purchase of eight replacement vans. Is there a motion?
Motion, Smith.
Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Gross. Any more discussion on this one? There was questions that weren't answered in committee? Let's see, I lost my place. Is this a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ajax is absent. Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
And Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up is twenty-two-two dash oh-six dash oh-eighty-one. It's a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for transportation services between Livingston County LETS and Hamburg Township. Is there a motion?
So move Plank. Support Reader.
Motion by Commissioner Plank, support by Commissioner Reader. This was talked about committee. Are there any further questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. The last resolution of the evening, twenty-two-two dash zero-six dash zero-eight-two. It's a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for transportation services between Livingston County and the townships of Putnam and Unadilla. Is there a motion?
So move Helserman.
Support Reader.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Reader. Further questions or comments on this one? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. We, we have claims dated June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and payables dated May fourteenth through June third, twenty-twenty-two. Looking for a motion to approve the claims and the payables.
So move Gross.
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Griffith. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We've paid the bills. Call to public, this is our second and final call to the public, and this is the last call to public. Citizens have two minutes.
We didn't do payables together. He did them together. Oh, you did them together. Go to sleep down there.
Yeah. I said after nine, I thought, well, we'll cut a little bit of time.
The left wing over here didn't catch us.
Did the clerk catch that? Okay, that's all that matters. So call the public, second call to public is two minutes to address whatever you want with the board. Is there, yes. Come on up.
These are the parts I'll send you on my email.
All right.
But I'll try to summarize. So first of all, in my comments for the open position, I don't know Matt. I didn't know there was an air apparent. I know nothing about that. My comments were directed toward the competencies of medical freedom. And again, I referenced, I was an HR manager, and I was just cringing over here that you don't have a candidate pool. You always need a candidate pool. So he might be the best candidate, he might be selected. You need a candidate pool. And I filled some top leadership positions with General Motors, and it's like you don't do that. As far as employees being disenfranchised, nobody should ever expect that they're next in line. GM did away with that years ago, and it actually worked out better because others felt like, I got a shot. So when I hear this, I'm like, oh, my God, this is like HR twenty years ago, not today. And the constituents sent a clear message, we want you to look for these competencies. I know it's hard work filling a position, but you guys got to do your due diligence. What I'm seeing is like the lazy, easy way out. This guy might be selected. He may be the best candidate, but you need a pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room?
I just wanted just to read a statement from the Declaration of Independence. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent, consent of the governed. So I just want you guys to keep in mind that you guys are making decisions based on the consent of we, the people that you represent. And personally, I don't know Matt, and I really kind of took offense that you thought we were all attacking him. Nobody attacked Matt at all. We were just saying we would like this to be opened up for you guys to look at all opportunities. Personally, I feel like a health director should be a health professional, should at least have an RN, and an MD would be okay. But we have suffered through how many years of Dr. Fauci, who is not, does, has no clinical experience? We need someone with clinical experience, and I think a nurse would be awesome. So my recommendation would be to look at all options and look for someone with clinical experience to be over all of our health decisions in this county. So I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room?
I too will be quick. I just want to thank the three that did your job and, and are listening to the idea of a pool of people which in any position or any high-ranking position, which we've determined this is a very important position. I was married thirty-two years. My husband was always climbing the ladder at local universities like U of M and such. Never would they have just selected Mike because he was the next guy or the guy they thought. And a lot of times he would get the position and several times he didn't because he wasn't right for the job. And, you know, he moved on to a new position. We need to know who's going to be the best for the job and that would probably be a medical, a person with a medical degree. Diane McCormick, I was here the night she did that. I felt like it was very sneaky. As parents, everyone thought that we have to follow the health department because that's what the school boards were saying. The schools have enough problems trying to run their schools and keep, keep the kids in them. They were following Diane McCormick and Matt, who tonight's the first night I've ever heard of him. I'm sure Matt's a great guy. And like Colleen said, he may be the best candidate, but he definitely needs to be in the pool of candidates that twenty-one thousand dollars to find someone to run the medical position of our entire county is a drop in the bucket. You just took all this money. How many months ago? There's money to be spent. I, I would just appreciate if you reconsider a, a pool and Matt can be right at the top of the pool, but he, he needs to be in a pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We'll go to Zoom. Sherry LaRue.
Hi guys. I'm at home and yeah, I have my pajamas on. I'll make this short. I started earlier by telling you about the shifting standards and how things have changed in the last sixty years. We have been slowly moving to a godless society. And without that, without that being our foundation, which is what our constitution was founded on, we are spinning our wheels in the mud. I will share with you a letter that Paul wrote to the Corinthians after Jesus's death and burial and resurrection. Let no one deceive himself. If anyone among you seems wise in his age, let him become a fool that he may become wise. For the wisdom of this world is foolishness with God. For it is written, he catches the wise in their own craftiness. And again, the Lord knows the thoughts of the wise in their futile. Have a great evening and God bless.
Susan Nichols, if you give her full name and township, you'll have two minutes.
Susan Nichols, Genoa Township. I really appreciate, first of all, the time that the commissioners have given us tonight and I know this is you know, a lot of discussions going on. I appreciate the commissioners that have taken the time to do their due diligence and listen to their constituents. One of the commissioners made a statement about judging Matt. And I just want to clarify, I don't think anyone here is judging Matt. He may very well be a qualified candidate, but we are asking as constituents that you have a pool of people. I also agree that the health director should be a health professional. That's what this is all about. This is about the health of our county, which has to do with medical decisions. This is a business decision, not an emotional decision. And I am sure Matt is a great guy. I want to reiterate that we are not attacking him. We are just asking that there be a pool of people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Looks like last up is Conley. Is that John Conley?
Good evening, board. Are you there, Wes?
Yes, we are here, John.
Good. You guys have had a long night. I was on earlier and I had to go do a board meeting for Brighton Area Schools. John Conley, Green Oak Township. A long night for you guys. So in this health department situation, going to be time Diane's career near forty years with Livingston County is coming to an end. And you guys have to pick someone to take her seat. The, obviously, the last two years represented unprecedented, unprecedented time. And we have all seen what, what this, well, we haven't all seen it, but we've all got a pretty good idea how awful it was. And Diane had to deal with it. Now, I wouldn't have done it the way Diane did it. When it came to the children of Livingston County and the students. They represented twenty-plus thousand of a near two-hundred-thousand population. Decision was made that it was going to be, the majority had to be looked after, meaning in a way, in my opinion, that the mass had to be looked after besides the few. Well, our job as adults, in my opinion, is to protect children first. Adults come second. The system we have in place right now and the allowance and the, and the height of power and weight regulated from our state down through our local health department is what did this. And
You have fifteen seconds.
Thank you. Many laws were broken. I'll leave you guys with that. You need to put yourself in a position that that never happens again, ever. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Going to go and close the call to public and ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move Helsner.
Or Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Helsner and support by Commissioner Gross. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, same sign. We're adjourned.